Okay, you ready? And you got our pledge tonight, right? You saw that? Okay. Okay. Just a little. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and get started, so. All right. We'd like to call the order, the Riverdale City Truth in Taxation Hearing for Tuesday, August 16th, 2022. Please let the record show that all members of the city council are present with Council Hilton joining us via video conference. We also have members of the city staff here as well as numerous members of the public. We would ask that all members of the public please sign the roll. It's important that we keep an accurate record of who attended this meeting, and it's being passed around right now. If you didn't get a chance to sign it on your way in, we will pass it around, and you'll have a chance to fill that out, so please fill that out completely. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance tonight by Council Bart Stevens.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Council Stevens. Our invocation tonight will be by Cody Carden.
Okay. Our dear kindly Father, thank you so very much for the opportunity that we have together together tonight and to discuss the budget and financial affairs of Riverdale City. And please bless us as we discuss these matters in this great community that we can have Thy blessing to know the right way to proceed and what is will make this community to continue to be a great place to live and to work. And please bless us with these things when we love Thee and say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Carden. All right. We would normally have a time for public comment at the beginning of our meeting for people to address the city council with any ideas or concerns that they may have. Because this is a truth in taxation hearing, we're not able to have that time during this meeting, so if you are here for a different item or some different comments, we would encourage you to reach out to the city council or mayor or attend our next meeting, and you'll be given a chance to address the city council. Now, you will still have time to address this in a public hearing about the taxes, like that's just for other items. We cannot put those on our agenda tonight. All right. As you are probably all here for our truth in taxation process, and as I mentioned, we will have a public hearing on that, but before we have that, we're going to have a an explanation and a description of what's going on, and that's gonna be by our city administrator, Mr. Steve Brooks, and he will be helped by our city financial officer, and that's Cody Carden. So, Mr. Brooks. Turn that microphone. Turn that microphone maybe towards you there so we can.
You know, any realtors in here? None? We generally have some show up, but what's one of the things they always tell you when you're selling a house? You always put candles or cookies or something, right? Right. So, my thought was, is if I get me a meal at McDonald's and eat french fries, I know it's dinner time and supper time for a lot of you. Maybe we could diffuse this a little bit without somebody getting really, really mad? Anyway, they're getting a little cold. I had to buy them a while. They're not as good, but I'm like you.
We're getting angry.
Yeah, that's what I, it just could have a double, double effect. But I, I'm a big fan of McDonald's french fries, like you said. I did the keto diet here a few years ago, but that was my downfall was McDonald's fries. I just, it was one of those things I just couldn't do, so now I do the convenient keto. Anything that's convenience on my diet, so I eat it all. And obviously, it doesn't work, but anyway, I'm gonna get back to this here in a little bit, but if any of you are so inclined, you'll see some of these notices around tonight. This is a QR code here for this meeting, so if you're feeling, you know, too stuffed up or and you wanna step out and log in on your phone, that will give you the broadcast of this phone, so it's available to anybody. And if our crowd gets too big, we didn't know what to anticipate here, so this building's not ideal for large meetings, obviously, as you can see, and but we want everybody to have this opportunity. The truth in taxation is kind of one of those really unique ones that the state holds, and they're very rigid on how you do it and how you perform it, and so that's why we were a little bit different than what we normally do tonight, so bear with us as we go. I just wanna say as we start here, I don't know that any of us wanna be here. I know you guys don't, obviously, and that's why you're here. These guys don't wanna be here, and we don't as staff, but unfortunately, you all elect them, and they hire us to keep this city going and to keep it afloat. And there comes times when we have to do certain things, and tonight's one of those things that none of us really wanna do by any means, but we do need to do some things, and so we're gonna make a little presentation tonight. Now, when I say we're gonna make it, really, this is Cody's presentation. I'm gonna do a lot of talking. I'm just the figurehead. He's the brains behind this whole thing, so anything he says is gospel doctrine. You can take mine for what you wanna do, but just try to be peaceful and civil through this whole thing because and try to understand where we're coming from. I mean, we wanna hear everybody's concerns and their voices, and I know these guys, I mean, they're in a tough position. They don't wanna raise property taxes. That's one of the things that Riverdale has taken great pride in for a long time. We're gonna cover all that. We're gonna go over some history tonight. Some of this stuff will be boring to a lot of you. The council's heard some of it, in particular budgetary things, not maybe so much the truth in taxation, but my guess is is you guys aren't that familiar with it. So, we're gonna go through a lot of things, and you're gonna feel like the fire hose, you know, in your mouth, because there's gonna be a lot come at you. But having said that, there's a lot coming up for the city of Riverdale and things that need to be addressed and some big concerns that we have that we've been putting off for a long time, and at some point in time, we've gotta make decisions, and so this is kind of the first step of that process, so we will go first. That may generate more questions for you, and so that's kind of why I asked the mayor to let us go first, just so we can give our spill and our presentation. Now, we can't necessarily address all those things, neither can the council at that time, but at least you'll have that chance to raise those concerns and questions that you have. Okay? Any questions so far?
All right. I'm gonna go back. Jim Owens, what is the current tax rate?
Let's, let's wait, ask your question when your turn comes on that. Is that fair enough?
I mean, we can cover all that. We're gonna talk about a lot of these things. Yeah, we're gonna cover all that.
It'll be in the presentation. All right.
So, now, like I said, we'll double team on this thing, take turns in doing different things, but go into our first page here. Let's talk a little bit about truth in taxation. Truth in taxation is kind of an interesting deal. What happened is I think it was Howard Stevenson, was he the big tax guru that was in the state for a long time? It used to be before truth in taxation came in, and it's been in place since 1985, but before that, cities just kind of did their own thing. And what was happening a lot of times, the cities were imposing some pretty hefty raises at times, and they weren't, it didn't seem like they were giving their citizens a fair shake and informing them on a lot of things. And so, when they came up with this idea, it actually came out of Florida, if I recall correctly, it was something that they were using down there, but it's a revenue-driven and not a rate-driven. And everybody always comes to us, and the first thing that happens, because I know all of you got assessments this year, and they were probably huge, and you had heart attacks when you saw them. And so, the first thing everybody says is, man, the city must be raking in money. But truth in taxation actually prevents that. That's what's crazy about this. So, on, in that one hand, it's a good idea. So, what they do is part of that truth in taxation is every year, we have to come up with a certified tax rate, and that certified tax rate tells the city how much money you have this year, based upon those assessments and different things. And it's designed to stay the same from year after year after year. Now, I say that with one little caveat. It does take into consideration some growth, and I don't know what else there is, but they're small changes. So, when you see that certified tax rate, so when your assessments go up really high, that certified tax rate goes down every year. It's to balance that out, and it keeps the city at the same rate every year. Do you understand that? So, just 'cause your assessments went up does not mean we got any more money. That's just not true. That's not how it works. Unfortunately, I mean, it'd be great for the city, not for you guys. It's never good for you guys, but it's, you know, in that sense, it's good. The other thing that they were just so serious about is that you have to give notice to the citizens, and you have to have a hearing. That's mandatory under truth in taxation, so they were getting around a lot of those things cities were doing before. That's why we've given notice, and that's why you guys are here tonight. Okay? The downside to that is, and this is what's getting us in trouble, is cities, because of all this formality and these meetings, cities tend to put them off. They don't wanna do them, so they go from year to year to year, which, you know, is good for you guys, 'cause you don't get any raises in that regard. You don't get hit that hard. The bad thing is, and this is the one downfall to truth in taxation, is it doesn't take into consideration inflation. And so, our rate stays the same, but has inflation ever stayed the same? It never does. And so, costs to the city continue to raise year after year after year, and if you never raise your rate, you're dipping into the pool, and you're getting further and further behind. Everybody understand that so far? So, that's kind of what this, we talked about here on this first one. Is there anything else I need to cover? Cody?
Okay, so kind of as Steve talked about, so we, as the city, are guaranteed an amount of money, not a rate. And so, you can see, it's kind of a teeter totter, if you will. As assessed values go up, then the certified tax rate goes down. So, you can see, this is the average home in Riverdale. In 2019 was valued at $276,000. Now, if it's your personal residence, you get a 45% personal residence exclusion, so you're only taxed on 55% of the assessed value. So, you can see in 2019, the assessed value of the average resident was 276, then the amount that was actually taxable was 151,800, and then the rate was .000972, and that generated $148 of property tax revenue for the city. Now, you're probably thinking, there's no way that I only paid $148. That's because Riverdale's property tax is only a very small portion of the total property tax, and we'll talk more about that in a minute. So, we're guaranteed this amount of money. So, then the next year, the state and the county, they do their valuation, and home values went up, and so the average home in Riverdale in 2020 was worth 303,000, so the taxable amount was 166,650. So, you can see the rate actually dropped from .00972 to .000921, and the amount the average residents paid was 153, so it went up slightly. It went up $5. You can see that trend continues in 2021, but then you can see, and this is before this meeting and our proposed rate increase, but you can see for 2022, the assessed value per Weber County of the average resident in Riverdale was 477,000. So, you can see there's a huge increase. That's probably what you're seeing on your property tax notices. So, the taxable amount is once again 55% of that, so you can see the city's rate dropped from .000848 to .00729. But you can see the amount of money that that generates is $191, which is higher, and so you're probably thinking, well, wait a minute, the city's getting more money. You just said we don't get more money. So, there was a really good article in KSL last week. It was called Utah Housing Market, The Dark Side of Higher Home Values. And I'm a super boring reader, but I'm gonna read a couple parts of this. So, this is from the State Tax Commission Chairman. KSL went to the State Tax Commission and said, hey, what's happening? We're getting all these questions. And he said, what's supposed to happen is if a taxing entity has the same amount of revenue as last year plus a permitted amount of growth, then they don't have a truth in taxation hearing, but they have an adjust, they adjust the rates downward if the properties in their taxing jurisdictions go up. So, as rates, as values go up, the rates drop accordingly to produce the same amount of revenues as the tax, for the taxing entity. But this year is not so simple. There's some dynamics. And so, then they go on to say, and this is the dynamics, and so this is what everybody's seeing on their property tax, including me at my house. So, it's like, okay, well, what happened? 'Cause all of a sudden, we're supposed to pay the same amount, and we're up to $191. So, if you read here in blue, it says what happened, what's happening is house values have gone up faster than businesses. Industrial property or agricultural property, Valentine says, and he's the expert from the State Tax Commission. Since houses are going up faster because of the hot housing market, industrial properties and commercial properties didn't go up very much, primarily due to still the effects of COVID and the slowdown of businesses. So, then he goes on to say here at the end, so the taxing jurisdictions may not have additional revenue, but it shifts who's paying the taxes. So, unfortunately, as a homeowner in Utah, this year, because of our property tax system, all of our home values went way up. Well, they went up faster than any commercial or industrial property. So, what happened is because our home values went up faster than the other property, when they add up the total and they allocate the tax rate, the amount of money that Riverdale wants across everybody, homeowners end up paying more, and businesses end up paying less. And so, that's what's happened this year with those property tax values, and that's why you can see on this previous slide that the average home in Riverdale, before our truth in taxation rate, they would have paid $164 to the city last year, and this year it's $191.
While the rate is decreasing.
While the rate is decreasing.
All right. So, this is one that kind of surprises people, I think. Where do my property taxes go? If you look at this graph here, and you'll notice that Riverdale City is in the blue, and if you follow that column over, Riverdale gets 14% of what you guys are paying. And if you look at some of these other taxing entities, the big one, if you go down that far right column, 55% of everything you guys pay goes to your Weber School District. And Weber County is onto the left on the pie chart, but they sit at close to what Riverdale gets, they get 12%. So, even though in your guys' eyes, you're paying a lot of money, there's not that much coming back to Riverdale. I mean, it's 14%. I'm not saying there's not that much, but it's a far smaller portion than people kind of think it is. Same thing, I mean, you could combine Riverdale and Weber County together, and Weber School District's bigger than both of us combined. So, I think that's a little bit surprising that people don't realize that a lot of that goes to your school district.
Okay. And so, this next slide, we just wanted to show, this isn't every city in Weber County, but it's the vast majority. So, you can see West Haven, they actually don't have a city property tax, neither does Marriott Sladeville. You can see, so, well, hold on just a second before you jump to that conclusion. So, here's all, everybody's property tax rate for the vast majority of the cities in Weber County. So, you can see, we're, and this is our proposed rate with the increase. You can see we're higher than, some of them lower than others of them. Okay, now, you've got to keep in mind, so like, I personally live in Far West City, so you can see I pay this to the city. However, Far West City doesn't provide my fire service like Riverdale City does. There's a, there's a fire district that charges property tax. And so, you can see, we tried to show this like apples to apples, so you can see in Far West, by the time I pay my city and Weber Fire District for the same services that Riverdale provides to you, it's their tax rate, if we combine those two, is actually higher than what we're proposing the increase to be here in Riverdale. And so, you can see, even though like, it looks like a great place to live in West Haven and Marriott Sladeville, because they don't have a city tax rate, their fire district tax rates are actually pretty high. They're higher than the city's property tax rate right now. And so, you can see, once we factor in those and kind of make these for the services you're paying for in your property tax assessment, once we normalize those, you can see Riverdale is at the bottom end of those. And if we look at these really close, the first few of these, these all have volunteer fire departments. So, living here in Riverdale or in one of the entities that have a fire district, you're in theory receiving a higher level of fire service, and so it costs more money. And so, that's where the difference is. So, you can see, once we normalize this rate, it really still is a pretty, the amount that we charge in property taxes is significantly lower than a lot of the other entities. And if you look at a lot of the neighbors here, like South Ogden, you can see this is their proposed rate. Now, they might not ultimately adopt this, but this is what their TNT rate was when they had their hearing. You can see North Ogden, Ogden, Roy, Washington Terrace, they're all higher than, than Riverdale.
Cody, I'm gonna stop you for just a second. So, we're gonna take a little breather here for a second. I know this is a lot to take in, so just kind of catch your breath, and I don't want you, I don't want people getting anxious that you're not gonna get a chance to speak. Everybody will get a chance to speak, so just keep taking it in, jot your questions down, but I don't want you to feel at all that you're not gonna get a chance, so we do wanna hear your comments. Okay, continue on.
Okay, we threw this in there mainly just to give you a little bit of insight. It's a, it's a history of our property tax rates for Riverdale, and I think it's important because it's, it sort of comes into play tonight because we're in the situation we are. Again, it goes back to what I said, city councils don't wanna raise your rates on you, and Riverdale has been really lucky for the, well, really since 2005, that they've had very few of these. The last one on record is 2010, and this is, this is an interesting one, and Mayor Burrows is here, maybe he can help us out a little bit about that. It's almost, it's very strange. If you look at the certified tax rate at 1242 and the adopted rate at 1278, and then you go over and see how much money difference from that year and the year before, you're only talking about $20,000, which really was, I don't know why they even did it. That wouldn't even have been worth your while. My guess is, is they were trying to send a message to the Utah Legislature that, yeah, we raised property taxes now and then. And so, they didn't go up very much, but they sent a message, because if we go back, and we'll talk a little bit about this further, we were getting a lot of heat from the legislature, and we still are quite a bit. They don't feel sorry for Riverdale, because we are one of the few cities that doesn't do these on a regular basis, and there's a number of other things that Riverdale doesn't do that most all other cities do. So, am I right on that, Mayor Burrows, that that was probably the reason why? That was such a small amount, you can almost not count it. So, in reality, the last property tax raise that Riverdale did was in 2007, and you can see that one went up to $515,000 from the 387 the year before. So, that one was a little bit more significant, but they just don't do them very often. That's just credit to the previous councils that they don't do it, but it also gets you in trouble in the sense that you're not keeping up with inflation, like I said before. So, you have to kind of weigh those options, and then what happens is if you go for so many years, then they come back in and they have to do a big one, kind of where we're at this year, because we have to make up for all those years that we didn't do anything. And so, one of the things that we've proposed to this council is to do this on a yearly basis, and even if it's just smaller amounts, so it's a little bit easier for people to handle than do something like we've requested this year where it's so huge. So, I just thought that was kind of interesting for you to take a look at that. Again, credit to your previous city councils and mayors, because they've done a really good job at that. Now, this one is something we also need to get into a little bit. So, I spoke with another city administrator here just last week, and we were talking about city budgets and stuff. Ideally, your city budget would look somewhat close to what the blue one is. The blue and the brown are both come into play here. Riverdale's budget is pretty much the orange one, and we'll get in this a little bit further in some of these next slides here, but, but Riverdale lives and dies on sales tax, and it's a huge percentage of our budget. Good, sound budgeting practices in the city is more in line with the middle one, where you balance out property tax, sales tax, and we have franchise taxes there, but it really includes all those other ones that are listed on the brown. We can just say all others. So, it's basically a three-legged stool, and you wanna get those as balanced out as best you can. Now, it's not realistic that you're gonna, especially in Riverdale, that our property taxes are gonna equal our sales tax. It's just not gonna happen because of how we're set up. So, that sales tax leg, tax leg is always gonna be bigger, but ideally, you wanna get them balanced out as best you can, because if something happens in one or the other, you're not gonna lose that whole leg, and then your stool's gonna fall over. You want that balance between them. So, if you look in the, in the brown one, there's a couple things on there, and these are common fees and fines and whatnot that courts charge. On the far right, impact fees, here's another bonus to Riverdale. It's a good thing for you as citizens. It's not a good thing for us when we have to go meet with the legislators, but Riverdale has never imposed impact fees, or very little, little weird things now and then. That's a good thing, because it put, that impact fees put the burden on the developers when they come in. The downfall to those is they're only one-time fees, but it does bring revenue into the city. Riverdale's never had to do that, and so they've chosen not to. So, it benefited us because a lot of businesses came here because you didn't have impact fees, and Riverdale grew because of that. I mean, as crazy as that sounds, I've never met anybody that doesn't have impact fees. They look at me like I'm crazy, that I don't know what I'm talking about. Well, we don't have impact fees. We actually looked at one this year, this whole water thing, because we need additional revenue for that, but there's a big, long process that you have to go through. It's gonna take us over a year and different things, and some of these big developments that are coming in need it before we could get it done. So, it really doesn't even serve us any purpose, and we're getting to the point where we're almost billed out that imposing impact fees at this point would be pretty much fruitless. Wouldn't do us any good. One of the other legs I wanted to talk about right there, well, we'll get into that in this, in this next slide. Now, if you look up in the top right-hand corner, this is more really a true reflection, the one that says Riverdale City on it. This is, this is Riverdale's. So, if you see that, that three-legged stool or the eight-legged stool, and we are clearly sitting on one leg. Again, that can be a big bonus, but it can also cause you some problems. If you look at the actual numbers, Riverdale's budget, 67%, two-thirds of our budget, come from sales tax. Again, it's good for the citizens, but where it's not good is when we start seeing things happen to our sales tax. And some of those things, we'll talk about a little bit further, but again, inflation is a huge issue when it comes to a city relying so heavily on sales tax, because when you have a big sales base like that, it's expensive to run a city, and that's what people don't understand. You won't find a city in this state, outside of maybe Park City, but I don't think they're even in the same boat, that has a population of 8,500 residents, that has full-time police, full-time fire, full-time everything. We have an HR department. We have everything, because our population balloons upwards of around 70,000 to 80,000 during the day. So, for 12 hours of the day, we're a big city, and people don't realize that's expensive. It costs money to control that and to regulate that and to protect, protect those people that come here and shop and eat lunches and things like that. Like I said, Park City's about the only one, and they're close in our population, but even them, I don't think would get near as big as we are. But, you know, you as residents, at some point in time, you're obligated to help keep those services afloat, and, you know, if, I can't just ask an officer to work part of a day, or a fireman to work just part of a day. I wish we could, and we just did daytime hours, but it doesn't work that way. It's not realistic. I still have Public Works Department. They have to fix the roads. They have to make sure we got sewer, that we got water, all those kind of things for all those people, at 70,000 to 80,000. It's not just the 8,500. This is where it gets expensive to run, run the city. The other thing that's a huge thing, and this one's been killing us, the, if we, if we lose some of our sales revenue, like the state designates distributions, and we'll get into that a little bit further too, but the state tells us how much of our sales tax we get to keep. We don't get to keep everything that happens in Riverdale. We only get a percentage of it. They keep taking different portions of that, and over the years, since that 2005, they've dropped that down and dropped that down and dropped that down. No justification, they just do it. Mayor Burrows dealt with this, 'cause it was, it was hot during his tenure. So, you run that huge risk right there. The other thing you run a risk at is if you lose one of your big tenants, so let's say we lost a Walmart, we'd be in trouble, big time. And for example, we lost to RC Willys this week. You don't understand how much money just left our budget in that one act alone, almost a half a million dollars right there in, in one tenant. So, when that money's pulled out of that sales tax portion of your budget, somehow you gotta make it up. We don't just have a spare 450, it's actually 400, what is it, 88, Mike, or something like that, so it's, it's close to 500. I say 500, 'cause in my world, it's devastating, but we just don't have a spare $500,000 to make up for that sales tax. So, that's always the risk you take when So that's always the risk you take when you rely on sales tax so heavily. So we're seeing that firsthand. So when we put in these proposals and we get into some of those numbers, that's one of the factors we have to consider. We just lost that, that's just gone, and we can't replace it. The only way we can is we have to tap into the citizens and say, we need help, you gotta help us out here, so. I think that was about, yeah. It's, it's tough, I mean, and that's what people don't understand. I mean, there's a lot of factors here that we're trying to budget and shuffle around here. We, we've been fortunate, we've been lucky, but uh, things are changing a little bit for us, so. What the city is currently doing, just so you don't think that we just sit on our hands and do pretty much nothing here. As, as we mentioned earlier, it's been twelve years since we did a property tax. Really, it's been fifteen years because we had that little one that I don't even count up because it didn't help us. So we have gone a long time, it's not like we, we haven't. But by doing that, um, then you go up to the top one there. We, as city employees, have had to find ways to make this work without putting burdens on you guys year in and year out. So the thing that's ironic about that is we have multiple people in the city that wear multiple hats. So just for example, let me throw a couple of these out so you're aware, we're not wasting your money. But my finance director, who happens to be sitting on my side, who's a CPA, this is his expertise, that's what he does. He is also our IT director. That's the weirdest combination I've ever heard in my life. They're like night and day as far as fields go. It's not by choice, we just throw these things on them, say, look, we need you for this, and by the way, you're gonna do this, whether you want to or not figure it out. So imagine that if you're a CPA and a, a numbers guy, and all of a sudden you gotta learn about computers. Kind of a, an odd combination. My community services director, back here in the back there, Rich Taylor, he, he's the fun guy. He gets to do all the fun programs and all the, the games and stuff. Uh, he does a lot of good stuff, but I'm just saying, all the fun stuff that he gets to do. We just promoted him to being over our senior facilities. You, the young lady over there just mentioned that earlier tonight. Well, is that a good compliment for you? See that? But Rich didn't want that, but I don't have anybody else. And so he's been promoted to that. And so he has to take care of that senior facility, um, the housing, the programs, all those kinda things. They're not even close to related to what he was doing before. Uh, myself, I wear a couple of hats. Not only is I'm the city administrator, but I'm also your city attorney. Uh, and that was by my choice, it wasn't that we did, that we had to do that because we have those budgeted for two different positions. But the mentality of the city is, how much money does this save? So by me taking both these positions, saves the city a hundred thousand dollars a year, just right off the top, without even blinking. And I, and none of us mind, that's the cool thing about your, your employees that work for the city. Nobody ever complains to me about this. We just do it because we know we have to do it. We love living, working here, some of us live here, but we like these jobs, we love Riverdale. We wanna do our part, and so we contribute to it. We're not just, not, you know, ignoring that. Randy Koger, who is our, he's actually our fire marshal by title. He is also, so he does any fire inspections, anytime there's a fire, anytime there's plans that are new coming in, he has to sit down and look at these things. That in and of itself is a full-time job for most cities. But not only that, but Randy's been in charge of our code enforcement. Again, completely different hats, they're so weird, but we didn't have anybody else. And so sometimes our code enforcement gets neglected because he just doesn't have a lot of time to do both, but he does do both. That one, we will talk about a little bit more later because I've gotta change that this year because the Legislature passed a law last year, I think in that session, and said, we have to have an emergency manager on, on our staff, that has to be that person with that designation. Well, Randy's the ideal guy for that, he's already kinda been doing it in a, in formal way anyway. But if I load that on him, I can't have him do code enforcement, he won't have enough time to do both. So there's another good example, somebody who wears multiple hats, but that's also a need for the city. I've gotta find a new code enforcement officer. Whether I would like it or not, I don't have a choice, we can't ignore that either. Um, my Stacy, um, our HR director, that's her expertise is HR, she's also our city treasurer. So, and she's a supervisor of a number of the employees up there in the office. Our uh janitor, some of you people who have been around the senior center, um, Chris, uh, he's in charge of, you know, our, our janitors and different things like that. And he was doing a lot of the senior programs and different things. He's also our public communications person, this little paper that you saw here tonight, Chris put that together. That's our janitor supervisor. You see what I'm talking about, people wear some weird hats, and it's a, a combination that I've only seen here in Riverdale. We've started recently a, a new program, it's a GIS program, if you're familiar with that, it's kind of a mapping system. We have nothing, not, not fully and complete, that marks out, you know, all our fire hydrants, all our sewer lines, all our water lines, all this kinda stuff, which is really valuable to a city, but it's never been done. So we started this new program. Well, the two people who are doing it is one of Sean's guys, because we kinda need that expertise from the Public Works Department for manholes and streets and all that kinda stuff. But then Michelle, my city recorder, helps him, she's his partner. Now, what's the recorder's going out on the street and, and sticking up a little thing in the air to get readings off that? I mean, you see the weird things that I'm talking about? Moving on, the other concerns, and again, these are further down the road, but there are things that we've gotta consider. We can't just put our heads in the sand and, and ignore it on that uh second one down. Our city facilities are getting old. We've tried to upgrade them as best we can, but they're getting old. This building itself is, when were you born? You were born in eighty-five? It's Cody's age, so I think it was eighty-four, so it's actually older than him, so that's why, that's how I remember it. But, so this building's what, forty years old? It's not gonna last forever, and if you see the, we shouldn't even be in this, this room, to be honest with you. Uh, we, well, it's not, we do have them here. But every time, because we use this for court as well. So whenever the AOC, that's the court people, come up out of Salt Lake and inspect this thing, they have a heart attack about this room. Because if an active shooter ever comes in that door, where are you gonna go? You're toast. I mean, your only hope is that door right there, and the chances of getting there are slim to none. So, and it's no different for the city council. Luckily, we have them up there, we might be able to get them out, but we wouldn't be able to get you guys out. And so they come up every time, they want that bulletproof, they want a wall in there, everything, trying to buy time. This building was not designed for that initially, the court and stuff used to be upstairs, it was really nice and pretty. I never saw that, that was even before Bruce's days. But because of safety, Bruce would know about it, but because of safety, they moved it down here. This is a terrible idea, but this building is not designed, nor is it, even the electrical wiring is the weirdest thing ever. We've lived with it, we'll keep living with it, but at some point in time, we've gotta make some changes. We've probably got one of the older city halls in, in uh, all of Weber County. Uh, additional park capital projects, I don't know how many of you know, just uh south of this building, there's those dirt lots that had the frisbee stuff out there. The city has forty acres out there that's been designed and planned for, for years for another new city park. We've never had the money, we can't do it. So we have that land out there, it never gets done because we don't have money. So again, like I said, these are things that are down the road, but they're things that we're gonna have to address at some point in time. Either that, or we get rid of the land, or whatever we do. But um, it's not just an easy thing to say, you know, you're not doing enough because we are doing as much as we possibly can on that. I'm gonna try and speed this up here a little bit. So I, I, I wanna give you a little bit of history because this comes into play, this is kinda crucial. This is where the state has nailed us here. So we always refer back to two thousand and five because that's when things really started to happen. Prior to uh, two thousand and five, when I told you that the state takes a lot of our money, our allocation on every tax sale in Riverdale was seventy-five percent. We got to keep seventy-five percent of every sale. And then the other twenty-five percent gets distributed out, it's reallocated throughout the state to different cities and different things. But that was nice, we were living high on the hog. That's where Riverdale really got built, between that percentage share and the RDAs, and the creativity of our leaders at that time, they built Riverdale right then. Well, the Legislature sees that, and guess what they do in two thousand and five? They come up and said, you're getting too much of your, your money, which they do nothing for, but you're, you're getting too much of your money, so now we're only gonna give you fifty percent, we're taking fifty percent. No change other than they just decided to do it. And that's why I say, when you rely on sales tax, the Legislature can do that at any second. They can take whatever percentage share they want, and that's what they did to us in two thousand and five. So at that point, Mr. Hanson was, was, and Mayor Burrows was, was here. We had to put the brakes on, and we had to make some serious changes at that time because we lost a huge percentage just overnight with no control over.
Are they doing that to all other municipalities, or is it just Riverdale that's losing twenty-five percent of their sales tax?
So let me clarify one thing. So the seventy-five percent stayed here where the point-of-sale occurred, and the other twenty-five percent gets allocated across the state based upon population. Well, how big is the population of Riverdale? Not very big, so all that money goes elsewhere, so they changed it to fifty-fifty. So fifty percent now stays here, and the other fifty percent gets allocated across the state based upon population to all the other municipalities.
So in other words, they're not robbing everybody else as much as they are?
So places like Kay'sville benefited a ton by that because they don't have any commercial, they don't have any of the cost. You know, we have a lot bigger police department, fire department because of all the commercial here. But like places like Kay'sville, a bedroom community, they have a ton of people. So all of a sudden, they got a twenty-five percent raise in their budget where Riverdale lost twenty-five percent.
Same thing with like Washington Terrace, you know, they don't have a big commercial tax base. Well, it's not, I mean, it's not illegal, Legislature can do, they create cities so they can do whatever they want. But in fairness to them, Bruce, did you have anything you wanted to add to that, or?
I was just gonna say, there were thirteen original cities.
Yeah.
That were called whole park cities.
Right.
That reduced down to three.
Right. And I was getting to that, that's what's next. So in two thousand and five, they cha- made that change, but I don't think it was active until two thousand and seven, if I, if I'm correct on that. So prior to that, Riverdale was very active, as were two of the other big cities, uh, Murray and South Salt Lake, wasn't it? We joined together with them, hired lobbyists, did everything we could to get the Legislature to do something, that's gonna kill us. Problem is, is when you get used to, and all of us are guilty of this in your own home, when you get list, used to live in a certain standard of living, and then somebody comes in and takes twenty-five percent of it, it's a shock to you, and what do you do? I mean, what do we do? So anyway, we lobbied that, we got them to put in place this whole harmless provision, which it, it postponed some different things, and then further on, they actually put in what's called a, it's a local option sales tax. So they let us keep an additional point oh-two percent on sales tax, but it's only temporary, it's not gonna go on forever. By doing that, um, and all kinds of weird things happened this time, recession hit and all that kinda stuff. So when they took all that money, we went down to them, said, we can't get back up to where we were. So they came in, they said, okay, we will guarantee you that you'll stay at a certain level. If you don't, then we'll give you a little bit more of your share back. Then that still wasn't even working, so then they came back and said, okay, we'll give you the point oh-two percent. But we're only gonna let that happen for fifteen years, this was in twenty fifteen. So we're sitting in twenty-two, so we've got eight years when that expires. When that expires, that point oh-two percent, I don't know if you've noticed, when you go around and shop, Riverdale's sales tax is just slightly higher, that's that point oh-two percent that we have that nobody else has. But that will go away, and so we will lose that money, and that's gone in our budget. So again, with foresight, we're going, okay, we gotta start making changes now because at some point in time, that's gonna be gone. Unless we can do some changes, which we have plans and ideas ahead that we're gonna try and lobby and different things. But it goes back to that thing that I talked about, the Legislature, we are not liked in the Legislature. It's kinda sad if you think about it, but there's a, a big local leader that's in one of the neighboring cities out here, absolutely hates Riverdale. Thinks we're the spoiled kid, and I'm gonna do whatever I can to nail you. And so getting that extended is gonna be slim to none. We're, we're looking at another different approach that we think might have a chance, but it's gonna be a battle. We don't know that it'll, it'll happen, so we gotta prepare that it won't. Anything else you wanna cover on that, Cody? So that gives you some background of some of the things we're, we're talking about. Just for example, I ran into a former Speaker of the House just a month or two ago, out in late, and I didn't know who he was until he told me his name, and then I told him I worked for Riverdale. And his first comments were, yeah, you guys got it nice over there with all that sales tax. That's, that's the mentality of everybody that they have, but what they don't understand is it's expensive to run this city. It's not like all this is coming in our pocket, I mean, we're, we're barely getting by like everybody else is. All right. Oh, one last thing I was gonna talk about. One of those previous legs, I talked about the courts, and, and this is important because your, your court system, which we have down here, and it's a service that we offer to, mainly to our citizens so they don't have to run down to downtown Ogden if you get a speeding ticket or whatever. We've made fairly good money off that court. It's not supposed to be a moneymaker, and we're not doing it for that reason. But in years past, it's more than paid for itself. So if, if I look at back in two thousand and eight, that court generated over six hundred thousand dollars in income for Riverdale. That has drastically decreased, and, and when COVID hit, it killed us because courts shut down, basically. So here again, you got six hundred thousand dollars in your budget that's gone. Now, we did get some of that back, we get warrant money and different things like that, but even the numbers of tickets, they're not out pulling anybody over during COVID. We couldn't have that and expose them, and so everything dropped. So the court bottomed out. Now, we're slowly coming back, but we're still not even back to even close to what we were. So again, one of those things that we have to consider that uh, we've lost all this money that we didn't know was gonna come, and we can't stop COVID or do anything about that, so. All right, uh, why an increase, and what's the additional revenue for? We, we've sat down, we've met with the code, since Cody's been here, and even before him, he's always told us that you need to make some changes, we're in trouble if you're looking at it long-term wise. So we've been telling the council for a while now, we need to make changes, we gotta start doing things. And we've started doing that already, we started doing some stuff last year. But I, I'm gonna get into this a little bit deeper. Our public safety, we're in a different world that we've never experienced with pu- public safety, it is just scary. Part of that was that whole uh, defund the police movement and different things, and it's, it's, it's killed us, just absolutely killed us. Fire's hurting, um, as I mentioned earlier, I'm gonna need a code enforcement and emergency management, I don't have a choice. That's by state code, I've gotta do that, we don't really have an options on this thing. But then the bottom bullet point there is we've gotta capture rising costs associated with inflation. We haven't done that in the past, and we need to start doing that because it's, it's absolutely killing us. Our costs never go down. Our revenue from taxes stays the same, but our costs never go down, they continually go up, just like yours do. And so we're doing more with less as we go along. That's all I'm gonna say about that one, Cody. Looking forward, and I've covered some of this stuff, um, again, these are needs, just, so looking at the Justice Court right there, this is what people don't understand, that Justice Court, those three items right there, all three of those I've had to deal with in the last month or two because I lost my bailiff service two weeks ago. A week before he was done, he no longer could do it, and there's nobody that does this anymore. Those are my bailiffs that have to stay down here, and they make sure people go through the metal detector, and the judge is safe and all that kinda stuff. Again, we can't go without that, that has to be done. There's nobody that does it. I had one company that we found out approval, and I have to bring them up, and they started this week, I think they're gonna be good, but it's gonna cost me twice what it cost me before. My prosecutors, again, we've had those for a number of years, they've never asked us for a raise. I found out that they were having on their own dime, they don't get paid that much anyway for, you know, attorney wages. But they hired their own secretary to do some of the work that we used to do through a position that we eliminated, and they're paying for that. So we tried to bump that up a little bit to cover that because it shouldn't be their obligation to do it. My public defender, I just lost him about a month ago and had to bring in uh, another contract on that, which is more expensive than what I was paying. Again, obviously, public safety, we'll get into that a little bit further. Senior services, I wanna talk about that a little bit because that affects a lot of you here. Not only the operations, but the building maintenance and capital items. Our whole facility over there is covered by the RDA right now. So that doesn't affect us a whole lot, we still have a little bit of money in there to operate that, that will run out. When that runs out, the only one that can pay for that is the city. That's not an expense that we're planning, we don't have that budgeted right now. That building, just for an example, uh, within the last year, wasn't it, Rich, we lost that uh water heater, or what was the? It was a little, yeah, a little booster, the dishwasher, ten thousand dollars for that one item. Our air conditioning went out last week, forty-two thousand dollars to replace that. We haven't called anybody yet, we're praying that it just solves itself, you know? But what I'm saying is, again, that's another one, that's one of our newer buildings, and that one's falling apart. And when that's back on the city's lap, and we have to pay for that, we either get rid of the building and get rid of the programs, or we have to come up with money to run it. Again, I don't wanna scare you to death, that's down the road, it's not yet. But it's, all of our buildings are in this kinda shape, we're not uh, we're not replacing any of them. We're trying to do what we can inside, make them look a little bit better, but they're still the same, same buildings. As I mentioned earlier, our staff levels, and we're gonna cover this a little bit deeper, Cody here will in a second, but we are on the same pace, same staffing levels as we were in two thousand and five. We just don't, we try not to replace people, and we've done okay with it, but we've reached a point where we've gotta start making some, some changes. Recruitment, retention, same thing there. There is a war going on between all the cities and their police departments. And wages are going up like crazy. Every meeting I go to, the first thing that comes up from city administrators is what, what, how's your police department? Where are you at? We, we had that opening in June and we still haven't filled it. That's never happened in Riverdale. When I first started here, I remember one that came open right after I started here. And I think we had a hundred and twelve applicants for one position. And if we get ten now, we're lucky. That's how bad it's gotten. And probably half of those aren't even qualified. And to their credit, Riverdale doesn't just hire anybody. And that's why we don't have a lot of lawsuits. Thank goodness. They're very careful with how they do that and they're hardcore. And that's the credit to these two guys standing over there and the ones that were before them. And, and I appreciate that. But it makes it hard, you know, and we don't have full staffs. Population growth, that's something that a lot of people don't realize. But right now, right now pending, we have, let me see where those numbers were, right here?
Yeah.
These, these are either approved or pending. This is development that's coming to the city. One thousand one hundred and seventy-eight units. Now, those will be a combination of apartments and townhomes and single-family homes. That's coming. That's not gonna stop. So there's a, there's a number they use by that that you plug in there. He actually ties it by two point six-six to get your population and what will come with that. So our population, just with what's already been approved, will increase over three thousand people from eighty-five hundred to three thousand. That's, that's what's coming. So if you increase by three thousand people, all that comes with more need for services, whether it's streets, whether it's police, whether it's fire.
Yeah.
They do. They do. And to some degree, and that will help. Same thing, we've, we've made it a requirement now that they bring their own water. I mean, we're doing whatever we can to help out. But this is what people don't understand. When, when a landowner comes in and asks to rezone and to build or something like that, it's not like cities can just stop that. We can control it, but we can't stop it. If we just say no and we don't have a reason for doing it, we get sued and now we pay their attorney's fees and they still get what they want. So as much as we'd like to say no, we can't. I mean, it's just, that's not how it works. And so I know people are frustrated with all the building. And thankfully, ours hasn't been that bad. You can see all of our neighbors that have just gotten bombarded, but we are going to have some. It's gonna happen and we, we're not gonna be able to stop it. I mean, we can't. So we do the best we can to develop it. So you see why we have concerns on these kind of things. All right. Motor view is one of them. Trailer park will be another one. That'll be an apartment complex. Motor view's not that big, surprisingly. Remember what that is off your head? How much? Fifty-five. There'll be single-family residents, but the one over there at Leslie's will be larger and it'll be, well, we don't know. We haven't seen a final plan on that because it can be bigger. The big one is the one south of here. You got seventy acres that they wanna develop. So imagine how much can go into seventy acres.
Where's this?
Right south of this building. You have our piece of property. We have our forty acres. There's another seventy down there. It's gonna get developed. And at some point, that, that one, that one. Oh. Yeah, it's on this side of the river. That was actually approved years ago, surprisingly. But it's just now coming to fruition, but it's, it's gonna go. There will be a new bridge that goes in down there over the river. So they're not all coming in front of this building. But those are things that are coming and they're gonna happen. Just so you know. All right, Cody.
Okay, I'm gonna hit this super fast. So you can see this is our authorization in two thousand and five for employees. So the total was seventy-seven twenty-five. You can see as of March of this year, our total was seventy-four. Now, actually, our authorization's still higher, but you can see that as employees have left and we've replaced them or done away with their positions, we've pulled that down. So we do actually have less employees today. And you can see, that's almost across all departments. Like, I'm in business administration. So you can see, it actually looks like it went up half of a position. But actually, there was a secretary who used to work over here and then went to Public Works. And then when she retired, we replaced them and we felt like it was best over here. So that's why this department looks up. You can, you can see in totality, we are down on employees since two thousand and five. So continuing to do more and more with less employees.
All right. This is the nitty-gritty. This is where we gotta go. So when we first sat down, started talking about this, and, and we haven't finalized any of this stuff. But when we look at our needs, police is probably number one. Because that's the biggest concern we have right now. And I'm gonna show you why. And I think you guys will agree with me by the time we get done here. Looking at just some examples here, I think this is just a great graphic. But the, the crime index on this chart is the number of crimes per one thousand people. So look at the cities who are on here. Look at their populations and then go down to that crime index. Forty-six point five-three percent. Like, we are way, way above any of our neighbors. We did throw Park City on there because Park City's kinda like us. They're a little bit of a fluke. Their population's close to ours. But even at that rate, they're only sitting at thirty-one point five-one. And again, we are forty-six point five-three. If you look at the total numbers of arrests, five hundred and thirty-five. The closest city to us is South Ogden at four sixty-four. Now, arrest is a big deal because those are very time-consuming. So if I only have one or two officers on the street and one of them gets tied up with an arrest, besides handling the, the thing at the scene, he's gotta take him downtown and book him. So he's out of service. We're, we're just out of commission, that one officer completely while that's going on. So arrests are very time-consuming. So when we look at these numbers, I mean, it's almost shocking. And then look at the very end column on the right. Sworn officers, officers of all those cities there, we're sitting at nineteen. Do you see why we're concerned about this? So what that means is I don't have officers on the street near what we need. Not even close, because we don't have them. We don't have them. And if they wanna take time off and things like that, there's been a lot of times when they've been told no, simply because we don't have the people. We've had to neglect training. We've had to do all kinds of things just to keep you all protected on the streets because that's our number one priority. Now, these numbers aren't completely accurate because in two, two thousand and nineteen, look at the arrest in two thousand and nineteen. The, the chart you're looking at was actually two twenty, twenty twenty. That's during COVID. So everything's down. But if you look at the, the note, that, the first bullet point there, in two thousand and nineteen, we had seven hundred and fifty-three arrests. So it's even higher than what this chart shows. We're getting back to that. I think Scott told me, as of today, we're gonna break even that record right now. So it's not going down. It just continues to grow and grow and grow.
Most of this is coming from outside into Riverdale, but we have to handle it.
A, a lot of it. One of the things that's been an increase, which has been, you know, concerning that you can't do anything about, but our homeless population is getting huge. You've probably seen it around the city. That is consuming a lot of time. And that is everywhere. You already know all the encampments these guys go and clean out. It's almost becoming a daily practice. Or getting them indoors of businesses and things. I mean, it's, it's crazy. But that takes time. And you send an officer, you really don't wanna send one because you don't know what, if they're carrying weapons or anything. You really need two. Well, if I send two over to that guy, I may not have anybody patrolling the streets in Riverdale. Go.
Yeah.
Yeah. Just one thing I haven't seen you mic cover.
Pop your mic.
Okay.
Anyway, so with nineteen officers, one of the things is backup. You know, we want these guys to go home, things like that. So, you know, fewer officers means fewer officers responding, fewer, fewer officers on shift. So that's one of the things that we think about. I think, Chief, correct me, we had one officer shot at like twice in a week just, just recently. So I mean, they're pulling their guns more. They're, it's, it's not the old Riverdale Police Department where they're, you know, it's tickets and things like that. There's some crazy stuff going on. And in our packet, every, every time we have a meeting, once a month, the chief will put in just a log of everything that goes on in the, with the police department and the fire department and all other departments. But it's pretty crazy reading to see what they go through on a daily basis. So just, just wanted to mention that, just because I didn't see that up there.
And, and I'm gonna go in a little bit more on one of those that you said there. So here's just another chart that I think's important and valuable. This is just crime. So you're talking about personal crimes, property crimes or social crimes. So they're a little bit more serious. This is not the little stuff. Welfare checks and keep the peace and traffic accidents. This is just crimes. These are the bigger things. So if you look at those numbers right there, again, when you compare all these cities, we're sitting at nine hundred and eighty-five, bigger than anybody except for Roy. And again, you go over and you look at the numbers and compared to any of those cities besides Pleasant View, we are smaller staffed than any of them with, with more and bigger numbers. Now, I wanna go into this next one just simply because I asked Chief Brinkman, I said, I want you to tell me, give me some examples of what's happened in the last month. Maybe it's two months. But I wanna read these because I hear this stuff all the time, every day, every week when we have department head meetings, some of this stuff comes up. Some of these I've seen videos of. And I want you to place yourself in their shoes for a minute. So a domestic violence call with shots fired at officers. I watched this video. And to be honest with you, I would have quit the force at that moment. Officer shows up, he's by himself when it first starts. The husband and wife are in, in the driveway arguing. He's trying to get it calmed down from his car in the street. Second officer shows up, does the same thing, trying to get it separated. They get the husband to come down the sidewalk. As he comes down the sidewalk, the, the other party to this runs back into house. Now, there's no threat at this point. Sergeant shows up. So I've got three officers on scene. The minute he steps out of his car, all of a sudden, bam, 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 bam. You just hear shots. You don't know where they're coming from. You don't know who they're at. Nothing. Luckily, our officers were behind their cars, all three of them, but they're all ducking for their lives. Across the street and down the road a ways, there's a family out and their Ring camera is picking up all this playing out. This is a ways away. It's not even close. Suddenly, you see their handrail explode from one of the bullets that came clear that far and hit them. And then they take off running up the stairs, if you can imagine. So as much as it scared them, think of those officers. They had no idea where this is even coming from. It was one of the scariest things I'd ever seen in my life.
Is this on forty-one hundred south?
I don't even know, but it was, it was scary. Let's put it that way. So that's all going on. So all of our focus and attention, once there's shots fired, we've got a, that's priority number one. Now, all of a sudden. Stabbing comes in at an apartment complex during the same time. We have no officer to send to it. They had to call in outside agencies. Example number, number two, weapon disturbance at a local business involving an assault, male being threatened with a knife. I think there was a baseball bat included in that as well. At the same time, another call comes in, it's received about a possible dead body in a backyard with obviously head injuries. Whenever we have a dead body, that's, takes up a lot of time and resources. We don't even know what's going on. We just get this call of a man laying on the ground next to a lawnmower and he's got this massive injury and he's deceased. And at the same time, we've got a disturbance going on, somebody's thumping somebody else. Where do we send people? I mean, you gotta pick and choose here. So we're doing as best we can. But once again, we have to bring in outside help. All of this happened within thirty minutes. Cardiac arrest call involving a forty-two-year-old female found deceased in her residence. Anytime you have a dead body, it's gonna take up a lot of time and a lot of resources. So we've probably got a lot of people over there. Right after that, three-car crash on Riverdale Road with injuries. Shortly after that, a disturbance call involving two individuals where one's attempting to run over the other one with their vehicle. All of these are high priorities, but we don't have officers to send to them. We just don't. All within an hour. A vehicle reportedly involved in multiple vehicle crashes, including leaving the roadway and hitting a sign and hitting parked vehicles. When you got something like that, you probably figure you got a DUI, which we did. He's walking away. So again, we've got not only officers trying to investigate everything that's going on, but trying to catch him. Within a short period of time, a five-car crash on Riverdale Road where the driver was also DUI and had a bunch of drugs in there. These are the kinds of things. These are not rare. They're happening all the time. And that's why when we look at this stuff and we're hearing these stories, we're going, we gotta get help. We can't keep doing this. And to Roy's credit and South Ogden's credits, they're always good about backing us up. But I don't want my guy showing up alone. But just like Alan said, he needs backup. Because if, if those, somebody starts shooting at him, he's gonna need help. If he gets hit, we're in trouble, big time, until we can get help there, which sometimes doesn't happen really fast. Okay. And, and, you know, I can, I can make kind of the same argument with, with fire. If, if you look at this graph here, numerous times, they've, they responded to calls either shorthanded or been unable to and had to call outside help. I, I'm not gonna go over that one deeper because I, I figured we were gonna run out of time here. And I don't wanna bore you with it. But just so you know, we're not just asking for this because we don't need it. We seriously need it. You wanna cover that one, Cody, that next one?
We've already covered it. So I think you're good.
Okay. Let's go to the next, just because I wanna show you. So when we sat down first started talking about this, again, this was before we knew we were gonna lose the five hundred thousand dollars. We sat down and we said, tell us how much it costs to replace your guy. If you look at these totals here, and, and this is quite accurate. We've had some other cities report to us and say, that's not true. But we, we went over this. There's more to this besides what we plugged out there. But one police officer, it's gonna cost me two hundred and ten thousand. That's the first year. It'll go down the next year. But the first year, we've gotta get a car. But equipment, training, all that kind of stuff. It can vary depending on a seasoned officer and a rookie, all that kind of stuff. But we're still looking at two hundred and ten thousand. If we just got two of those, we're at four hundred and twenty. If you look at my code enforcement officer, again, part-time, we can do a contract, it's probably gonna look at seventy-five thousand. Now, firefighters, we've got three of those listed. Again, we started this a long time ago. We actually have, have filled one of those. So that's down to two now. But you're still talking, you know, a hundred and ten thousand each. And then my emergency services manager, if we end up bringing in one of those, you're talking to fifty. So when you add those totals up right there, we're at eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So when we come in and we ask for a, a tax increase, this doesn't include the five hundred thousand dollars we lost. Just those needs right there already exceed the total we ask you for. So that's why I say it's, it's scary, the position we're in. Do we wanna touch that one? Are you good?
We're prioritizing.
Okay. All right. Now going back to my meal up here. So I had my, my grandkids from South Carolina up a couple of weeks ago. We don't get to see them very much. My daughter lives down there. So we took them out to dinner one night and we went to McDonald's. That's why I picked McDonald's. It really wasn't because of the fries, but especially cold ones. We took them out to eat and they wanted to do it. And so we go and we get a meal. My wife and I both got meals. Roughly about eight bucks, eight something, I think. By the time we got done on ours, and then their little kids' meals were five or six bucks. And then to make it sound like we were doing something healthy, we got some extra apple slush, slices, just so we could tell their mom we weren't feeding them complete junk food. By the time we got done, it was over thirty dollars. And so I look at that and say, that one meal alone would have paid your property tax increase for two months. And to think, and, and again, I don't want you to feel guilty. We're not trying to make you feel guilty. We're just trying to tell you, this is what we're faced with in Riverdale anymore. And we've gotta make tough decisions. And this is one of them. But we could, that one meal, I could have paid for two months of your increase on this. And that could get me another officer, maybe two on the street. I think it's well worth the investment. So again, I don't wanna make you feel guilty. That's not why we're here. We don't wanna do that. And I recognize some of you are on very fixed incomes and even that fifteen dollars a month is a lot. But we're not just doing this because we wanna, want more money. We're doing it because we need it as a city. So. Do you want to do anything else? I think that's, that's all we'll cover, Mayor. And the meal's free for anybody who wants to take it with you when you're done. It's nice and cold. So good luck. And I even bought this, this kid's meal. It's got some chicken nuggets and they're probably really good when they're cold. So.
All right.
As far as questions go, you'll have your chance to talk now and you can ask those things. Yeah, it was more fun that way. I, I thought maybe I'd get hungry. So it was worth it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Brooks, for that, and Mr. Carden for that detailed explanation. And thank you for your patience. I know it was a lot to take in, but we want you to understand. You, you know, you are Riverdale residents. And, and so as we go into this public hearing, I wanna emphasize that we are not here to antagonize each other. I realize you folks got questions. And we wanna try and answer those. These guys did a great job trying to get the stuff out there first. And, and we, you know, we don't want you to feel like you can't come up here and share your thoughts. We wanna encourage everybody here. That's why you're here. That's why we're here. We're, we are Riverdale residents. We're your friends, your neighbors. And we want to get through this together with you guys, okay? So we're gonna run this a little more formally than we normally do. Because we have so many people and we, we wanna get through it. And so I'm just, I'm just gonna tell you, like, I'm, I'm gonna have you come up. We'll have you maybe speak for three minutes or so. We're gonna try and limit the time each of you speaks. I will allow the city council to try and answer your questions. You guys are gonna look to me. I'm gonna give you permission to speak. We're gonna try and keep this as orderly as we can because we do not want it to get out of hand, okay? We appreciate your patience. Like I said, that was a lot to take in. But so the next, next step in this is we need to move on to opening a public hearing. And so, let's see. Any questions on that public hearing? All right, we need a motion to open it. We have a motion?
Second.
And we have a second. Any discussions on that motion? All right, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Okay, the public hearing, thank you, Mr. Hilton. The public hearing is now open and the time is yours to approach the microphone here. We do ask that you state your name and your city of residence. We don't need your address, but where you live, if you'll just give us your name and where you and where you live, and, uh, we will, we will allow the city council to try and answer your questions if you have questions.
Hello, my name is Robin Marcus, and I live in Riverdale. And I only have a couple of questions. Number one, when y'all develop a budget, and someone, I don't know where, says, okay, your tax rate, your little, little piece should be this high. On what are you, the tax, the, what do they call it, the assessment that they gave today? 'Cause what they assessed my house at, there's not a chance on the planet, and they assessed my house at $50,000 more than my neighbor, and my house is not bigger than hers, they're identical. So there's something wrong with that, and I realize y'all don't do that, the county does that. So on what are you assessing it, is it last year's? Little revelation, or this year's?
Counselor Stevens, did you wanna say something?
No, I think that's more for Cody.
So it's this year's, and that's required by state law, there's nothing we can do about it. Like we said, you know, the assessment goes up, the rate goes down.
So next year, when someone comes to their senses and realizes my house isn't worth a half a million dollars, and it goes way down, back down to where it probably should be.
Then the rate goes back up, but the amount of money should be the same.
I get to pay the same next year, too?
So in theory, the same amount, but the rate changes with the valuation.
So my taxes will be the same?
Even though the house is more.
In theory, yes, except for probably the school district, and, you know, like, might go up, 'cause usually they do every year.
Okay, the other question. I know R.C. Willey closed, at first I know, I, I knew the vast majority of the people that worked there. And they all said, oh no, we're not closing, and I said, I bet you do, and they said, oh no, we're not, well, they did. I read in the paper that it was part of their tenure plan. Did they not discuss this plan with you?
We, we've known about that for a little bit, but not that much. They didn't tell us anything about a tenure plan, we weren't even sure they were leaving. And so it was a little bit of a surprise when they closed, we weren't planning on that, so that's why none of that stuff was factored into our calculations when we started this early on, we didn't know.
And it kinda looks like you wanna try to recoup that whole $950,000, which was also in the paper. All at once, because you're, that's how much, that's about the difference between last year's and this year's.
We anticipate that a lot of those increases will be these new positions, we're gonna try and make up the-
No problem with that, I love my police officers. Every, everybody I know that comes to Riverdale that doesn't live here, I tell them, be careful, my Riverdale policemen will get you. And they will, and I'm glad for it, they will. You know, I, I, it's not as bad as the base, where when they say 25 miles an hour, they don't mean 26. It, they, they do give you 26. But I do, I tell people that come here, you watch out, 'cause my policemen are Johnny on the spot, they will get you.
Counselor Stevens, I think, has something to say.
Let me just mention something about R.C. Willey. Now, um, I got this from somebody in the know, this isn't their, they haven't said this in so many words, actually, they kinda have, but, uh, R.C. Willey put a lot of money and, and capital into that late, new, latent facility. With the plan all along to close Riverdale and Syracuse.
Syracuse, yep.
Now, Riverdale, I'm, the numbers are gonna be off here, so don't hold me to it. Riverdale did 50, 55 million sales, Syracuse did 40, 42. And they anticipated that new facility bringing in, and again, this is me speaking, I, because numbers get really complicated to follow, they anticipated that new store to bring in about 110 to 120 million a year. Okay, so, um, the, the theory is, is do you expand the pie, or do you cut up the pie, the same sized pie, and, and make it, you know, smaller pieces? Well, their, their theory was, yeah, okay, uh, no, sorry.
There you go. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
The, the theory was, is that they're going to, um,
Share.
They, they asked if they could, the local people asked Mr. Buffett, his organization, to, to keep Riverdale open, because they figured Riverdale, and once they opened that in, in Leighton, Riverdale continued to have the same amount of sales. But the, they needed to have a certain level of sales to justify the new facility in Leighton. And the Riverdale facility is getting old, and it needs a lot of capital improvement. And so they made the decision, by closing Riverdale, they could, they could justify the, the massive expense to create that new beautiful facility in Leighton, and without having to put in all the capital improvements they'd need to do in Riverdale.
Why don't they share? We have to share. Don't they have to share?
You'll have to ask them, I can't answer for them. I'm telling you what was told to me.
We would really like them to share.
It's the legislature.
Okay, so when you asked about, who, did we not anticipate? Yes, because they, but they invas- vacillated, they were gonna keep it open, keep it open, and then they, they, corporate made the decision, and it was gone.
Okay, we're gonna wrap this one up, 'cause we've gone kind of a long way.
If you want any more, you're gonna have to ask R.C. Willey.
Mayor, can I just say something that's in partial response to hers, because I think all of them need to hear this? Um, on the back of your tax notice, they give you some information on there, you can appeal that appraisal amount, so don't miss out on that, because I've seen a lot of people in the years that have appealed that, they got those rates down, and there's other exceptions like elderly people, I think there might be a military one, there's different ones, so read that notice, get on the county's website, 'cause we don't have anything to do with it, but some of you might be able to get out of some of those things, so don't let that slip.
Definitely military, military, aren't we supposed to understand?
Yeah, I don't remember what all there was, there's a number of, right, right, right.
Elderly as well.
All right, Mayor Burrows, welcome.
Thank you. Um, I try really hard not to come to council meetings. Um, I appreciate, I appreciate the fact that, uh, you have considered many things. One of the things that really hasn't been brought up in detail is that cliff that happens in 2030. The state legislature is very critical of Riverdale. If Riverdale was a county, we would be the 13th most prosperous county in the state. And it makes them mad. They don't think that, they think that we zoned for dollars. Uh, we've got the second busiest surface street in the, in the state, uh, well have had, River, uh, Redwood Road was before. But, um, one of the things that happens is, the legislature, um, many of the people, as Steve mentioned, one of the legislators was from Fruit Heights, who have zero amount of dollars coming in for income. And they want Riverdale City's money. And that, that's one of the areas, um, there's many others. There's, we're down to three hold harmless cities. Um, we, um, the mayor and I, current mayor and I, uh, talked to Senator Milner, uh, on the Fourth of July after she spoke, we've, um, lobbied in the past, we will continue to lobby. Um, and former counselor, Doug Peterson, is very well connected in the legislature. We will continue that fight as private citizens, um, with permission, obviously. We want to, uh, hold them at bay as much as possible. We need to get the, the, um, secondary tax rate extended, and to not have them take any more of our, they really want, don't care if they go below 50/50. That, it doesn't bother them at all. I know that there is a lot of needs in the city. I recognize, uh, we tried very hard to keep the tax rates low, property taxes, because people have to put up with the traffic, and so on, on Riverdale Road. So that being said, I know that we maybe artificially kept it low, uh, and that does need to be, uh, changed. The main thing I would say right now is a horrible time. Because of inflation, because of all of the things, every other entity has raised their taxes at the same time. So please look hard at what you've got, and what, maybe you can phase this in, I, I'm not privy to all, well, I am, but, but, um, please look at it and make sure that you're doing, I know the city does as good as you can. So, thanks for all you do, um, I appreciate your, I recognize the amount of time and effort it takes, so, um, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, how are you guys doing? My name's Michelle Jensen, I'm a resident here in Riverdale. Been here in Riverdale since 1998, so, lived on both sides and been here for a really long time. Um, if this property tax increase was 35%, I mean, as organizations, we're all dealing with needs for staffing increases, I'm the associate director for Weber Human Services, and we're trying to find mental health therapists, it's like finding police officers. There aren't any out there, so we've increased their salaries probably at least 15% just in the last 12 months. So we get it, um, and like I said, if it had been just that much, I wouldn't be here today. But there are only six taxing entities in the state of Utah that are asking for more than we are, across the entire state. So, you know, we're dealing, I wear five hats in my organization of 400 employees, I'm the compliance officer, I oversee IT, I oversee support staff, we get it, but this is just, I guess my one question is, is there anything else we can do to push the burden back on commercial? So we're half the size of South Ogden, we should have half the size of a police department if we didn't have our commercial area. How do we move that burden off of the residents and put it back on the commercial sector? So.
State legislature.
No, there are other things, I think. And let me give you one example. Um, all of the cities that have a higher tax amount than Riverdale, North Ogden, Ogden, Roy, all of their senior centers are subsidized by Weber Human Services. We hire their senior center director, we pay for a lot of their instructors, we do their meals for them. Riverdale, in the glory days, we built our own, we had the funds for it at that point. Weber Human Services asked if Riverdale wanted to participate in those subsidies, and they didn't want to at the time, and that was okay. We didn't need the subsidies. But now we look at what we're doing, and we're having to make up those differences, so I think there are other options out there to move that burden somewhere else.
Thank you.
I didn't wanna stand, but. My name's River, Richard Hall, and I live here in Riverdale. When we moved into Riverdale in 74, it was an oasis. Beautiful, quiet community. Then somebody decided we needed stores. We needed avenue, revenue, so that we can give it away later, I guess. Johnny's Dairy was my big place to go. That was our big hit, business. You talk about R.C. Willey leaving, and you mentioned $500,000. How much money does Maverick bring in on Riverdale Road?
That's a good question. Add a new one there.
Wait. How much does that bring in?
I, I don't, do you know numbers just off your head, Mike?
You should know about the business.
We can't publicly disclose that, 'cause that's a private business doing, we, I have no idea, and I can't, it's actually no offense if we start.
You don't wanna tell me. Okay, you're not gonna tell me. I count one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, new businesses coming in. Right here in the paper. One of them is a Maverick across from me. Now, don't tell me that isn't gonna help R.C. Willey leaving.
Okay, can I just say one thing?
Tell me it's not gonna help.
It will help, but think about how much you spend when you go to Maverick. So I went to Maverick before this meeting, 'cause I drink too much Pepsi. So I went and got two Pepsis and a thing of donuts, and I spent 10 bucks. How much do you spend when you go to R.C. Willey's? You go and buy a couch, and it's 1,500 bucks.
I look more than I buy.
Okay, okay, one at a time.
And I'm not getting in argue, I'm just gonna say, so it, it takes way more sales.
Talk to me, talk to me.
It takes way more sales at a Maverick to make up the difference, and that's what we're trying to do, we're trying to recruit those businesses back.
Have you ever counted how many people go to Maverick versus R.C. Willey in a day?
You're right, there's a lot.
Okay.
But it-
Numbers.
Right.
Right.
And that's, we will work on that.
Mayor, can I say something?
Yeah.
So Richard, the, these guys watch every single business, from R.C. Willey to Maverick to, I mean, hair salons, big and little. So, I mean, to, to go after them about one specific business coming in, there's, there's all kinds of developments.
No, there's seven. Right here.
One specific, seven, I'm saying as businesses come in, there, matter of fact, there's, um, a lot of stuff going in over by America First, um, we don't know what it is yet, but they, they watch these dollars and cents, like whether it's, and actually with your 10 bucks, you paid whatever it was in sales tax, you know, I mean.
73 cents or something, 75 cents.
So, I mean, you know, the, the thing is, it's a balance, and this, this isn't like, um, something that we've, like, concocted, and just said, hey, you know what, these, these guys told us they're moving.
I just wanted information, I didn't play with anybody.
I'm just letting you know, just.
This is not personal.
Give me just a second. So, the thing is, as we've gone, as we've gone through this, like, Cody has explained this tax rate thing, the certified tax rate to us, online, um, that, that could be watched online, I don't know how many times, but like, I, I'd say like 50 times. And it's, this, this is terrible, it sucks to be in this position, which I'm in your position too, by the way. You know, so, anyway, I just wanted to let you know that they watch every dime that they do, from, and every month, they look at the report and see where it comes from.
I wanna give Mr. Hall just a second to speak.
Some of this has gotta offset some of that. That's all I ever said.
For sure. And I, can I just add one little thing, Mayor?
You talk one situation, but you don't talk the other side.
So the other side of this, and our police chief can talk about this, I don't know how many times they go to, um, R.C. Willey's a year, but very few. Our Maverick, if you go to Maverick very often, our police are always there, they respond to over 100 calls a year at Maverick. So even though, yes, we are getting revenue, there's a big cost associated with having some businesses. And that's the offset, is yes, we're, we're generating, we're, we're pouring, and that's what Mike's job's to do as the community development director, is to replace those businesses. But sometimes it's not an even switch, and some of them generate more money and require very little police services, others of them, it's just the opposite.
Just one other thing.
I, the many times I've been to Maverick, I've never seen a police officer.
On a, on the sales tax revenue side of it, too, as, as Mayor Burrows was talking about, and Mayor Mitchell talking about meeting with our senator, our local senator, Senator Milner, on the Fourth of July, she spoke at the Sunrise Service. They're lobbying to keep that point two, point 02% here, because it helps us, and it's falling on deaf ears. They're, I mean, it's, it's gonna take a lot of work, 'cause Mayor Burrows was talking about, it's a big deal to us, it's not a big deal to them. And, and they keep throwing things towards Riverdale, like, uh, school age population, which we horrible on, I mean, there's, there's just different things that they constantly are looking at to, um,
Well then.
Change this dynamic, and, and it's rough, it, it's a really hard decision.
It's been said, when the hole gets too deep, you quit digging. Then why do we keep bringing in more to give away more? That you need more police, you need more of this and that. Are we gaining or losing? I don't know. That's all, I didn't mean to make, take up so much time, but something's gotta offset something.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Hall. Yeah.
We, we like-
Their mic's off.
We like certain types of businesses that are big-ticket, low-traffic. The automobile dealerships, we love them, because they generate a lot of, of high-ticket dollar sales, but low-traffic. A Walmart, a Maverick, well, not so much Walmart, but a Maverick is high-traffic, low-dollar, and, and like- traffic, low dollar. And, and like was brought up, the, the police responses to R.C. Willy were minimal. Police responses to Maverick are frequent. And so, the cost to the city of supporting certain types of business is going to be higher.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Okay. Name and city?
Name and council, I'd like to introduce myself. I'm William Arnold. I've been a resident for fifty-seven years. I've been active in police organizations throughout the nation. I've been a president of a national organization. I fully understand the situation you have with these people trying to do those jobs. It's a thankless thing. One thing I'd like to bring up, I noticed in my recent bill for my water, sewer, and garbage, there was approximately a twenty-dollar, twenty-two-dollar raise. By my humble opinion, that covered most of R.C. Willy's loss. Am I wrong?
Mr. Carden?
So, trying to answer this quickly.
I tried to get, get to it quickly.
The city, um, we run a bunch of different businesses, if you will, under our one hat. And one of those businesses are kind of like our general services, our general fund, if you will, our police fi, our police, our fire, our community services, our senior department. And that's largely funded by property tax, sales tax, those general type of revenues. Now then, we have other businesses that were required by state law and by generally account, generally accepted accounting principles, that we have to run like a business. One of those is our water fund. One of them is our sewer fund. One of them is our storm water. One of them's our garbage and recycling. Anyways, so we have to charge, per state statute, we have to charge like a reasonable fee. And we have to, we have to, we can't even do like a transfer back from the water fund to the general fund without jumping through a ton of hoops. So the wrong answer is, it's almost like it's a separate business, like that's Maverick and this is R.C. Willys. And so unfortunately, there's not a ton we can do there, as we're trying to balance the budget.
Okay. Next thing on, that I'd like to address the council and the business manager, if it's somebody, um, it appears that the whole nation, and let's say include the United States and the Utah part of that, is raising taxes. It seems like everybody, I mean, everybody. There's not one person out there that's not.
Not to mention inflation.
Well, we can talk inflation, but, and I understand that. I've also owned a business in my life, so I know a little bit about the process of money that's doing that. Anyway, there's a lot of residents in this state, people that live right in Riverdale, that are probably one paycheck from being homeless. Pardon me. I hope you take that in consideration. In conclusion, I'd like to thank the council for all they do. They've done a fantastic job. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you, Mr. Arnold.
Take care of the poor.
Thank you. A real quick.
Counselor Stevens? There's a difference between tax and fees. Waters is a fee, and it doesn't make money. It has to break even. And so, the water distribution is a fixed, has fixed incomes. So if you sell less water, the fixed incomes are still up there. So you have to raise the fees a little bit to offset those fixed costs, so it breaks even. And so it's not a tax, water fees are not a tax, they're a fee. Uh, and it will correct itself once we get into the.
So we're being punished for conserving water?
That's not what I said. I said we are paying the fixed cost.
Okay, one at a time. You'll get your time, Mr. Owens. Yeah, but this is really not a discussion about water fees. That's for a different night, so.
I just wanted to differentiate between fees and tax.
Yeah, but we would love to talk to you about that on a different night. This is our truth in taxation. Go ahead, Mayor.
I'm Lynette Groh, and I've been a river, a resident of Riverdale since nineteen eighty-five. I'm on a fixed income. I get a minimal COLA in my pension. I get a minimal COLA in Social Security, which Medicare takes. And my Riverdale taxes are going up ninety-four percent. So, and if it was just Riverdale taxes that were going up, I could handle it. But it's, it's water. It's my electricity. It's my heat. It's, it's everything. Everything is going up. I'm in a world of hurt, because I am on a fixed income. So what I'm asking the council to do, as you take the information from this hearing, go back and sharpen your pencils one more time. One more time, sharpen those pencils, and see if you can get that increase down just a little bit for all of us in Riverdale, but especially those of us that are on fixed incomes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Christina Dodge. I've been in Riverdale for forty-three years, um, when it was calm and cool.
Get closer.
Sorry, okay. Christina Dodge, I've been in Riverdale for forty-three years, when it was a nice pleasant community, and now it's like a concrete jungle out there. I know you have to have progress, but this is a little much. And we're only talking about Maverick as a new entity, but there's a new Starbucks, there was Crane Chicken Place and a Hawaiian Place, and then in front of Lowe's, I don't know what they're building, but it's enormous. And then there's the quick oil change thing, and then there's a new, um, Italian store, and then there's a Crave Cookie. So is that not going to bring more revenue? Maybe not as much as R.C. Willys, but there's all these, oh, and there's a goat haircut plate that's just went in there. I mean, there's all these little places keep coming. That's going to take our police department, our fire department, take our water usage. I mean, it's, it's going way too far. And then you're going to build in rezoning apartments and whatever. That's going to bring in more people, which is more crime, more, everything. I've, and people, everything's raising, and they're on fixed incomes, which I am, because I'm a widow for five years. And there's more people that are hurting more than me, but everything's increasing. Food, gas, clothing, everything. I think maybe you ought to, you know, reconsider, have a little heart, and maybe cut the tax thing in half a little bit, or, you know, level it out a little bit at each time, because people are hurting. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Jim Owens. I'm surprised the mayor knows my name, but then again, I shouldn't be probably. Uh, I've only been in Riverdale a little over six years, six and a half. And we moved here because it was a nice, quiet little place, especially where we are. And then they brought in the F-35s, and that went away. But I'm a veteran. I'm a proud veteran, and I'm a proud participant in the political scene. One of the biggest problems we face is a government that is out of touch with the people. Our council, and our mayor, and our city staff are not out of touch. I'm sure you feel the pain we feel when these things come. But it still hurts. And it's hurting those that are the most vulnerable the most. And if they're, like she said, if there's any way that you can go back and figure out how to tighten the budget, I'll come look at those ACs free of charge. That's my business. A Riverdale-based business. Uh, and I'll give you a second opinion free of charge. One of the things to help our police department, I've thought a police reserve or auxiliary of volunteer people that are trained and skilled, as a veteran, uh, my hat flopped to one side, was green. I know a little bit about some of these things, and backing your buddies. If we could have something like that to help augment and make it so they're not out there all alone, that would be something that would help alleviate the stress on them, as well as the stress on the people of Riverdale. I think there are a lot of things that we can do, short of piling on additional costs to the people. And I hope we can find better solutions for that. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I didn't want to do this, but we've got this little deal, this city, county, county, other, and schools. Schools is huge.
I'm sorry, Linda. Will you let us know who you are and what city you live in? Just for the record.
Everybody, a lot of people know you, but.
Okay. Linda Pfaff, and I live in Riverdale. I've lived here for twenty-five years. Uh, and before that, I lived in Washington Terrace, from the time I was five. So, uh, the, the schools, I'm, I'm tired of the schools, tired of it. I mean, I've, I went to schools, I graduated from the Y, I did all these things, but the schools are getting so much, so much, and they are giving so little. And the schools, besides that, they don't want to pay for this, they don't want to pay for this, and they're, they're just, I'm, I'm just tired of it. It's, it's wrong. We, we've got to say, we don't need the, the big, I, I don't care. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Michael Richter. Um, lived in Riverdale for thirty years, approximately. Um, I had no intention of speaking today. I actually just wanted to come and watch. I just wanted to kind of get a feel for the council and, and where you were coming from on this. Um, but as I listened to the presentation over there, I had a nickel for every time they said, we're telling you something you guys don't understand. Didn't set well. I fully understand. We fully understand the cost it takes to run an organization, a, a city municipality like this. It's expensive. I get it. We all get it. When we talk about , uh, supporting our, our officers, you will get, I'm sure, nearly unanimous support from the people in the city. Uh, we want to do all that we can. Um, a close to one hundred percent increase in one year, and I think if I took anything out of this, uh, presentation, it underscored to me that this is perhaps the worst time to try to do something like this. We all came out of COVID. We all experienced the, the impact on our personal, our individual businesses, or if we're working for somebody. Uh, companies I work for going through layoffs and cutbacks, um, everybody's seeing it. But a one hundred percent increase in one, and if you say, well, it's been ten years since we've had a, an increase, ten percent for every single year, I get it. I understand, I understand the need for an increase, a reasonable increase. Um, but it, it feels to me, um, and I'm, I'm just echoing some of those things that everybody else has said, I think that, that the timing, I don't think you could choose a year that would be more difficult than this one. And I just hope you, you consider it. I understand the needs. And listen, we're going to support you. But I am interested. I, I will watch what the council does here. Um, we raised our family here, and we want to continue to live here. But, uh, we want to watch what's happening. That's all I have to say. Thanks.
Hi, I'm Chris Riplinger. Only lived in Riverdale three years. Bought my first home, and God willing, it'll be my last home. I really like it here. So, um, I appreciate the, the information that was shared. That was really helpful. I'm new to this sort of stuff. Um, I did have some things that I saw that were, that felt a little concerning, or they, it felt, uh, like a, a good one-sided sales pitch. So, some of the things that I notated. Um, R.C. Willy going, going out of business, the revenue that comes down, the differentiation between Maverick and, and R.C. Willy, I appreciate you sharing that. That helps me. I didn't understand that, so thank you. Um, but because that is going out of business, then wouldn't the impact fees also go down? So our expenses should also go down theoretically, correct? Um, the other thing is, lots of, you mentioned lots of new building and residents that's coming in, and you kind of pitched that as, so costs have to go up. But it's like, aren't those bringing revenue that will completely offset that? The revenue was not mentioned in your presentation. That seems weird that you wouldn't, I mean, it doesn't, it just doesn't feel balanced. Maybe it was an oversight, I don't know. Um, it just seemed a little off. Um, and then the next thing is, uh, is, is the money, is any of this money or revenue going toward a hundred thousand dollars in furniture for the city? Is that happening? It's not?
This money is. And let me just answer one question if I can. So if you look at that slide, the rate, the certified tax rate right there, for the average home in Riverdale is a hundred and ninety-one dollars and twenty-five cents, based upon the four seventy-seven. We haven't calculated this exactly, but Weber County Sheriff's Office, they estimate, or they bill the residents, or the cities that have them as their police provider, two hundred and seventy-five dollars a call. So, yes, we're getting growth. We're, we're going to get a hundred and ninety-one dollars and twenty-five cents potentially per residential unit. Now, that's not going to be the same, right? Like on an apartment versus a single family home. So we're going to get revenue. But one police call, we're like in the hole, if you will.
So is there a way then to make sure that the incoming building at least matches the expected expenses?
The city really, like, as Steve alluded to, we really don't have a way, like, if you own property and you come to us and say, hey, I want to build a Maverick here, if it fits within the parameters, we can't stop you and say, hey, no, like, you got to bring us more revenue. Like if.
So impact fees.
And impact fees are one time, so how, what an impact does, so like, say we had a park impact fee. What a park impact fee does is it charges a fee to build what, like, say I was moving to Riverdale, what it would cost to have an equally, an equal park to what Riverdale already has. So like, say, Riverdale Park, we could charge a fee to build what my impact would be for that park. And it's, so it's one-time money, we can only use it on capital expenditures. So it would like help us build a new park. But it doesn't, it's not ongoing funding, so we can't use it to hire like a policeman.
So, so the, so the new housing that's coming in, we're, we're pretty sure that the expenses will exceed the increased revenue. And there's nothing that we can do about that.
Especially if it's high density. There's, there's really not a lot we can do. I mean, like, we're going through a process right now to look at the general plan, and , um, we got a grant. So like, your concerns that a lot of you have, like, you should voice them in regards to the general plan, because that's really kind of the way that the city has to respond to that.
Okay, so, so there's not a hundred thousand dollars going toward furniture?
We have in the budget, in the Capital Projects Fund, which is once again, a totally different fund to replace some chairs and things in the budget.
Is it a hundred grand?
It is a hundred grand, and it's for this building. A lot of the desks in this building are over twenty-five years old, and it's to replace some of those desks.
You should check KSL. You'll find it much cheaper than a hundred grand. So. Yeah, that, that sort of thing. You see what I mean? It's like, that wasn't mentioned, and it's separate, it's separate, right? So.
It is.
It just doesn't, you see what I mean? It doesn't feel, it feels very one-sided, and it doesn't feel like everything's coming out. Um, but I'm, I'm not saying, anyway, I, I understand you guys are doing your best, but it, it would help us feel better about some of these changes if it was like, here's some pros, here's some cons, and here's some other considerations, instead of just kind of where it feels kind of more one-sided. So, um, so we can't charge Maverick a different rate for, okay, we covered that. Um, the last question I have is, we're all having to make cuts. Um, we all wear lots of hats. I'm sympathetic to that. Um, a lot of these cuts are going to hurt. Is the city willing to have the hard conversation to make hard cuts? For example, you cut a full-time employee to allow an eight or twelve percent salary increase for everyone else, things like that. Is that something that's been discussed? Are you willing to have those sorts of conversations? And that's the last question I have.
And just in response to that, we have less employees today than we had during two thousand and five, and we have way more stuff that we have to do. Um, Harrisville City is proposing a hundred and sixty-six percent tax increase. And what they did during COVID, if you look at their presentation, they let like one employee in every department go. Well, because they. Well, because they did that, they lost 60, over 66% of their employees in all their departments, because all of a sudden, the workload became too much to bear, and they could go somewhere else and do less. We're kind of at that point as a city. So if you want Sean Douglas, who's worked here 30 years and knows your sewer system, to stick around, we do some of those things. Those employees that wear multiple hats, they're going to be gone.
Sure. And I'm not suggesting police or fire. I'm just wondering, are there, and I'm not privy to the numbers, are there areas that will hurt, maybe it's not the employees that will hurt to be cut, that can be looked at? And with that, I'll yield back.
Thank you.
If I could just briefly address that a little bit, just for your guys' knowledge, until we know what our tax rate is, and we know what amount of money we have, we can't really finalize anything, because we don't know what's going to happen. So once we have that, then we can calculate that in, and knowing what we've got and what we can and can't do. And then at some point in time, we will sit down as staff and prioritize exactly where that money's going to go, depending on what they give us. Because until you know that, you can't really do that. And then once that's done, I will come back in before the council and get some direction from them as to where we go. So there's, everything's always on the table. We're not just saying anything's gone, so, but we can't make decisions until we know what we got to work with, so.
And can I add one other thing there? Lots of you have brought up, like, this is the worst time to do this. So if, just for the record, we started this process back in January to implement a tax increase. And so we had, you know, like, we didn't know who else was going to raise property taxes. We didn't know what inflation was going to do. It's, truth in taxation's like a very slow process. And so, you know, like, anyways, we have been working on this for a while, and even for years before that, I guess I'd say.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Carolyn Cunningham. I'm new to Riverdale. I'm new to Riverdale, but I really enjoy it, and I really want to appreciate, tell you how much I appreciate what you're doing here. And the explanations that you guys gave were excellent. I really appreciate it. And especially would appreciate the fire and police that are here, because I've certainly had to use them a couple of times, and I do the, I think they do a phenomenal job. But I had one question about, I noticed that the population for Riverdale was very, very small, but then we have all these people coming in. And I'm just kind of brainstorming. So you probably already thought of it, but I just wanted to ask, is there a possibility of a way of, with maybe a sales tax or something? Obviously, there are, all these people are coming in because they're purchasing things. Very small, but they are purchasing things. And I get the difference between RC Willie and the smaller companies that sell things. But if the sales tax were raised a little bit, the people that live here aren't going to be purchasing nearly as much as all these people coming in. So wouldn't that create a revenue that you could use if the sales tax was increased?
So we're required by state law, like we can't change that. The legislature's the one that does that. And so we can't just, I mean, it'd be awesome if we could, right? It'd be awesome if we could say, hey, we just, we want to charge, because you, Riverdale is very unique, as you guys all know. I'm not telling you anything you don't know. Like, what other community has, you know, 9,000 people who sleep here, and however many people are here during the day, whatever number you want to choose. But the legislature doesn't see that, and they're not sympathetic to us. And so we're charging.
Yeah, they want their money from us.
We're charging as much as we can. And so like a lot of, like, go to the legislature, tell them that. Like, when you vote for your legislative members, like vocalize all that, because we're trying to meet with them. We've met with Ann Milner, and we've met with Representative Miles, and a few people. And we've voiced our concerns with Mayor Searle. We met with them, and we just only get so far as the city, because they kind of look at us as, we've got all this money and, and things for the population we have. But they don't see the hard cost. They don't see that our crime rate's higher than the other cities. They don't see that.
So how would we, so it sounds like multiple times this evening, legislation is where we really have to do the battle with. So what is the best way that the community can do that?
Tell all your legislators to give Riverdale 75% of point of sale. We won't even be here, so.
It came from a city where the state tax, the city tax was 10%, but all of the cities around it was eight. It's, so that's, and so that actually didn't change anything from the city. They actually got more businesses, even though the tax was higher.
So Carolyn, I don't know if you caught it, but in the presentation, we are actually charging an extra two tenths.
You are, but it's going back down.
Riverdale's allowed to do that.
Yeah.
And we get to keep 100% of that two tenths.
Right.
And it's been great. It's helped us fund all sorts of problems. I mean, it has carried us. But that amounts to about a million right now. It's about a million dollars a year.
Like probably a million, five, million, eight.
Or even a million and a half dollars. But that, this is something all of you need to understand, it's very important. That is going away in 2030.
Right.
And we have asked, unless something changes. Now, we have asked the legislature, hey, please extend that. We need you to extend that.
Yeah.
And they just, they just shake their heads and say, ah, Riverdale. And so I know you guys hate this, and we hate it too, but one of the benefits of this tax increase is it does help the legislature to see that Riverdale is trying. We are trying. So when we go to them and they say, you have the lowest property tax in Weber County. You're not even using the tools that you have. No, we don't have that. We're right in the middle. We're doing, we're doing our best. That's what we need to be able to show them. We're using all the tools that they've given us, and we're still not making it. So that's just something, great idea to charge a little extra. We're doing that.
Right.
But that's something the state has to allow us to do, and they're going to stop that in 2030.
Yeah.
So it's something all of us as residents need to be aware of. If you ever get a chance to reach out to your state legislators.
Yeah.
Make sure you tell them, hey, extend the local option for Riverdale.
Well, maybe there's another way. That was just my brainstorming, but some other way where there are obviously, all the people coming in are obviously the ones that are using more of the police and using more of our resources.
Definitely.
And so it's kind of like a whole bunch of stepkids coming in, spending, eating all your food, and then leaving.
Yes.
You know? And so there's got to be a way to make them have to pay a little bit more.
Yeah.
To use our resources, rather than the people that live there permanently.
And I think Counselor Stevens had something.
Two points real briefly. Because we charged that extra 20 basis points or 0.02%, if you buy a high-ticket item here, it's going to cost you a little bit more. And there was a car dealership up in Morgan that said, hey, shop Riverdale, buy in Morgan, because you could buy the exact same vehicle in Morgan, because they did not have the, the.
That point on too.
And, and some of our big-ticket businesses are saying, you know, it's hurting us because they can get it cheaper somewhere else. So that's the first point.
Yeah.
Now, the second point is, is we're fortunate this year, because this legislature redrew some boundary lines for representatives. 4400 is, is a mark of demarcation, now instead of having one representative represent Riverdale, we have two. So 4400 North is represented by one, and 4400 South is another one. So we actually have two representatives now who are going to be in the, in the legislature representing Riverdale. So if you think somebody else is going to do it, chances are, yeah, maybe, but talk to your legislator, because now we have two representing us.
Mm-hmm. I think we are, Dave.
We don't know. The election's not over, but.
Thank you.
One will be Katie Hall, taking Kelly Miles' place.
Katie Hall will be at eleven, which is, which is south of River, 4400.
It's currently Rosemary Lesser is the current representative, and she will be running against Jill Coferd in the election. So reach out to both of them. Say, hey, I live in Riverdale. What are you going to do to help me? What, how, how can you, you know, how can you get me to vote for you? Well, that's the support we need.
That's just our representatives, too. If you know other representatives, you know, I'm friends with a couple other guys that are, you know, around the county and things like that. Talk to all of them, because it's, it's not just their vote. You know, there's 300 and, 376?
No, there's 79 representatives, 29.
Oh, it's in the House. So, so anybody that you know, anybody that you have time to call, you know, work that. But have a, have a good argument. If you do, just call and you're, you know, ranting and raving and, you know, saying, well, this is what I need. For example, Chief Shalley from the Fire Department, we have, say we have three fired, three firemen on duty, and an ambulance goes out with two. That means there's one guy left in the, the fire station, right? There's been two fires in the McDonald's and Walmart, that they haven't even, like cleared Walmart. They just, they take care of it. So the guy gets in the big truck, and he's driving it by himself, hoping that he's going to have some help. But he can't do that. And Chief Shalley has a presentation that he does that's absolutely amazing, that will change your life if you get an opportunity to do that. And maybe you should run that. You still do it? Just at the senior center or something, we can do it for residents, but it was in your first year, correct? As a, as a fireman, your seventh year? He, a fireman died in a house fire, and he goes through the details of what that is, and the, the things that should have been done better, and the things that could have been done better. But when you have one fireman on a truck, he, he can't do anything. Even when they're talking, and when Steve Brooks is talking about the, the police showing up with three guys there when the fire, the shots were fired, you know, one guy shows up at a time and things like that. And I, like, this, this property tax thing pains me like you have no idea. It's, I want people to go home at the end of their shift. It's not, you know, I mean, Steve kind of made light of it with the McDonald's thing and what it costs and all that kind of stuff, but these guys need to go home. And, you know, Casey, raise your hand in case everybody doesn't know Casey. Two years ago on Christmas, there was a murder in Riverdale. He caught the guy, Christmas Day. So I was with my family when he was investigating a murder. It's $15 a month. And I have some objections to this. I mean, it's, it's $15 a month, and I apologize for that. But it's $15 a month to hopefully send people home. So, I mean, I understand it's a, well, we're going to have more time to talk, aren't we? So never mind, I'll shut up for now. Sorry about that.
Mayor Burrows, if you could just come up and explain, he, he has a little more insight into that legislation. I just want to make sure we're crystal clear on that. Because he helped fight that fight.
I don't want to take a lot of time, but one of the things you have to realize, as these legislators represent other communities, so when we say, poor, poor Riverdale, then you've got Washington Terrace, you've got Uwenta, you've got South Weber, that are all in one legislative district, and they're saying, we want your money. So they've got a balance to handle. So it, it takes a lot of courage for them to represent everyone, but just be aware that when you're making the case for Riverdale, they're saying, well, what about these other people I represent?
Thank you.
Let's see, someone else is going to get up, so. Thank you.
Julie Williams. I'm a resident, 50 years. I've had a home for 26 years. I have a question. I love Riverdale. I appreciate all you do. Appreciate your service. I was wondering if there is a petition, how many of you would be interested in going after the state to retain some of our resources, especially in the next 50 or 15 years, when they want all of our money?
We, I think all of Riverdale would vote for that, but that's only currently about 9,000 people, less than 9,000. Another year or two, that'll be at the 12,000. But the entire population of the state would be saying, no, we're the wolves that want you lambs for dinner.
That's right. Right. But we are not Park City.
No.
And we're not the typical Park City resident. We are a $60,000 average income place, and like some of these, some of these elderly people, they're on a fixed income. They cannot afford this. I'm going to be one of those in those 15 years. I have the option to move. Yes, my house is worth what they say it's worth. I went and had it checked, if I sell it today. I don't want to move, and most of you residents don't. A petition is about the only way we can go after the state, and maybe write a letter to your government, you know, put it in the paper. I'm willing to work on that. I read specifications all day. I'm pretty sure I can go through their documentation. You've done a wonderful job at your presentation. I appreciate the information. I'm willing to support Riverdale. It's a small increase for Riverdale. It's a huge increase for schools, and maybe we should be getting some of that money back from Weber County for Riverdale School. It's been there since I was five. What have they done? You know, have they given us funds to make improvements? Can they do that? Is that in the plan? I went to TH Bell, so did you. It's still there. What are they doing? If we're going to have more residents, 1,800 more residents that are going to have to go to school, what's in the plan? I'm looking at the future. I'm willing to work on a, on a proposal. Who do I work with?
You can, Julie, you can spearhead that through me. I mean, it's not going to hurt us. And to say, we're not going to roll over on this thing, we're going to give them the best fight we got. We've got a couple other ideas in mind that we might be able to sell to them, but it's going to take some help. We're going to need some support from some legislators to get this through, so, as this gets closer. But that's one of the reasons why we want to start now, because we're only talking eight years. That's going to go way faster than we thought, but just get in contact with me, we'll get that rolling.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Yes, Kelse Hansen.
I, I agree about the school district, and I, I regret to be one of the people that's never been involved with the school district. In my whole life, I've been a single person with no kids, and I've funded a lot of educations, and I don't regret it. We need an educated society. But as a city councilperson, to see them raising taxes this amount, like you're saying, at this time for all of us, when inflation is so high, when we need to raise taxes to have police officers not die on duty, you know, and for what purpose? Like you said, we have outdated schools, and we're not on the top of their list for replacing those. They mentioned that they're going to replace it someday in the future, but that's not for sure. And so I think for all of us, the more we can get involved with the school district, they have public meetings, you know, we have, we have to vote for the school district board. I don't know exactly how all of that works, but we can get more involved and have a bigger voice, because I agree, we're paying, as Riverdale residents, having the oldest schools probably in the county in the school district, and to have that kind of an increase, and with them not advertising, well, this is for the teachers, you know, look at what the teachers have gone through. We all support teachers. They're not saying that. Where's this money going? If it's not coming back to our schools, where our, our kids are benefiting from it, so. And that's what I would just suggest for all of us, is to learn more and get more involved. Have a bigger voice.
Thank you. Counselor Stevens, did you still have something short?
Back to the comment, Julie. From my perspective, this 0.02% that we're getting is a Band-Aid. And, and we're dying, Riverdale is dying the death of 1,000 cuts. Very slow, very painful, because we are progressively taking steps backwards, very, very small increments, and it's, and it's hurting us really bad. And, and yes, we're not going to get any attention from the state legislature if we have low tax rates. Now, excuse me. My, I think the solution is, is there's one variable that determines how much the state is taking. Well, the state is taking 50% from everybody, and then they repatriate or profit sharing, whatever you want to call it, back. whatever you want to call it, back based on your nighttime population. One variable. That has to change because not everybody is, lives in this world. That's not a equitable distribution. It, that, that one variable is what is, is killing us because our population is low, but yet our costs to, to support these businesses is very high. And so the, the, the key is not keep that 20 basis points, whatever. It's to change the distribution or the collection instead of 50%, 50, you know, it needs to be something more favorable or have more variables than just the nighttime population.
Thank you. Good suggestion. Okay?
Can I just ask you a question on that? If we show?
Come on up to the mic. Come on up to the mic. You have, here's your whole three minutes.
If we show that our outside population, like West Haven, community population is visiting Utah or visiting Riverdale or outside of Utah, can we base that or change that state rule? That it's not just nighttime?
Yes.
Okay.
Quick response.
Everybody here has just spent, invested more than two hours to learn of this concept. It's not an easy concept to follow. One of the things is if you have people running for an office like Katie Hall is, is in, where I, so she came to my door and so I bent her ear and, and it took me probably 20 minutes to explain this concept and I'm not even sure she fully understood it. But like was pointed out, you've got South Weber that's in her jurisdiction or her district that is completely 180 degrees off. It's a better community, 12,000 people, they have a Maverick and they have a pizza. That's their only commercial, uh, retail sales. So the, the point of it is, this is a somewhat complicated topic to explain and to explain the dynamics of it. So to answer your questions, Julie, it, it takes, it's, it's going to take a little time. It's not something we'll see in the next legislature session or two or three, but it can be done. Is that kind of, okay?
Okay, thank you.
One of the things that, Stacy Hawes, I live here in Riverdale. I thought I lived here a long time, but apparently not. I've been here about 20 years. I served on the council when the initial redistribution of sales taxes was done. And one of the, one of the big things that kept coming up as part of that was cities were, um, were zoning for dollars. And one of the things that I tried to tell people was when I moved to Riverdale, there were two, there was a city election and there were two panels of people running. There were the panel that was being supported by the developers and there was the panel that was being supported by the citizens. The panel that, that was supported by the citizens was the panel that won. And this is what we got. So it's not like we were zoning for dollars. So it's, so when people bring that up, it's like Riverdale was going to be this way regardless of how we zoned. The only way that it was going to not be a commercial center was if we took all their land and didn't let them do anything with it, which obviously you can do. So the other thing about the distribution of sales taxes is that, as has been pointed out, the 50% is by point of sale, the other 50% is distributed by population. Riverdale's population is not increasing at the same rate that the state's population is increasing. So in fact, our share of that other 50% continues to go down. When I was on the council, we, if they had implemented it immediately, we would have gone from 75% to about 58 or 59%. I think now it's probably down to closer to 56% or lower. It's, it's just as the city, as more people get, come into the state, um, Riverdale's portion of the state population continues to decrease, even though we have more people. So that hurts us in the normal distribution thing. On the other side, I totally understand, sales taxes are paid by people and the people should be able to, um, benefit from those taxes. So the cities that have no retail, they do deserve some amount of sales tax because their people are paying those sales taxes. How that's distributed is a really difficult thing to do. The one thing that I would like to say though is that the water rates were, I think, a little bit mishandled. I was told that the, that the increase was delayed because of COVID. It is now hitting us now. I think that it would be appropriate to delay at least a portion of the property tax increase because we are being hit so hard by the water increases. So, so, you know, I think that increasing the property tax is not an unreasonable thing. Doubling it is probably a little unreasonable and, um, delaying some of it to later years and having to go through this every year for five years, I don't think would be a bad thing. The residents may not enjoy it, you guys may not enjoy it, but I think it, that that would be a much, um, easier thing for people to handle financially. So I would, I would seriously, um, ask you to consider that, um, work however you need to, with the budget to be able to implement it in a, over a longer time period. Thank you.
Thank you. If there are no other public comments, uh, we would need a motion to close the public hearing. So moved. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
And that's passes it. I think that was everybody. Yeah, okay. Yeah, he's still with us, Mr. Hilton. Um, so that passes unanimously, so the public hearing is now closed. Thank you for all of your comments. Thank you for your time and just know that we do appreciate you as Riverdale residents. We are also Riverdale residents and, uh, we appreciate you being involved and being here tonight. We'll now move on to our next action item. Discussion and action on the proposed fiscal year 2023 budget, which includes a proposed property tax increase. Um, Mr. Carden, number eight, letter A.
Um, well, first of all, can I say, I want to say one more thing about the legislature. So as Mayor Burrows alluded to, our friends are the other people who are similar cities to us, the other hold harmless entities. And so one of those is like Vernal and Naples and Murray and South Salt Lake. So in addition to just us, because we're not a very big voice with 9,000 of us, but with those other communities, that's really where our success is going to come from. That's kind of everything we have. Ideally, as some of you have alluded to and we've talked to, um, South Ogden does truth and taxation every year as part of their sustainability plan. And that's probably something that would be good for us to do, to go through this process every year through, as we get these challenges coming through 2030. Um, the thing I would, I would avoid, I guess my biggest concern is, um, kind of like Counselor Arnold said, how important do you feel like funding police today is? Because that's the only downside to, to pulling this all the way back or, or partially back and fire too, is what do you guys feel like we need today? And, you know, if, it, it's going to be really sad if, and not that this, this one-sided sales pitch, but if we don't do anything today and then we have like a major incident happen. And so that's, I guess, where the balancing comes, right? Is what do we need to do today versus what can we put off for tomorrow? And, and that ultimately comes down to you guys and what you, you feel like. And I'm happy to answer any other questions you have. I think you guys are pretty well-versed in property taxes now.
Counselor Hanson.
I forgot to turn on my mic and I wish I would have asked it before so many people left. If we were going to split the difference from my math, it only looked like maybe a $4 difference per month for residents. Would that make a difference to those that are on a fixed income, even $4 a month? Or is it just even, even just the idea that we've reduced it at all, even though it is only $4 a month? Does, well, does it make a difference, the $4? That's what I am trying to understand.
Are you saying rather than 15, make it 11?
No.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, like if we split the difference in the proposed tax rate from where we're at now, somewhere in the middle, it'd be about four something dollars.
Seven and a half dollars.
So, yeah.
Not 11.
So either way, that's what I'm asking. Does that make enough of a difference? Is it just the idea that we would reduce it or is it the money itself, I guess?
With, with a $20 a month increase in water, you're already, so it's not, it's not just, is it $15 a month or 750? It's, is it 35 or 20, 25?
And unfortunately, this is kind of an awkward way we're doing this, um, because we should have, each person that speaks should come to the microphone and, you know, everything's being broadcast and stuff, so, I mean, it's definitely something we can discuss up here.
That's a discussion, I guess the rest of the council is.
And I, I will be honest, we have heard a lot of comments tonight. Um, there's a lot to take in. Um, and I know a lot of, a lot of other cities will take a little bit of time to digest some of what has happened, some of the comments that have happened. And, um, sometimes they will come back in a separate meeting and maybe not make the decision tonight, uh, on whether or not to, um, change that tax rate. Uh, and that would be my recommendation to the council is maybe consider tabling this item and bringing it back in two weeks. Hopefully everybody's available. Um, and if the city staff is okay with that, that, we have a fifth Tuesday this month, is that correct?
We do. This has to be done before the end of the month.
And that is cutting it close.
If you're going to set another meeting, I'd almost rather do it next week just because we can't take a chance of missing that. We're going to be in trouble, but it's up to you. But we do have a fifth Tuesday, we could go then, but that's really pushing it close to the end.
Counselor Stevens?
Okay. Um, the water increase is set to sunset in November. Okay, so, no?
50% of it is.
50%. Only half.
The drought rate.
Okay. So the question really concerning the truth of taxation is, it's going to get raised, it's just how much? And, you know, what's, what's the comfort level of how much to raise it? And so, I mean, that's a rhetorical question, but it's, it's like, because it, it, something has to be done. Now, granted, yes, we can say this, it should have been incrementally done every other year or every third year for the last 12 years. So it wouldn't have to be such a kick in the shorts in, in a one-time deal. But unfortunately, we had mayors and councils and whatnot that didn't do that over the last 12 years. And so now we're stuck between a rock and a hard place. And so, um, I don't know, I'm kind of, I'm, I'm good to proceed tonight, but, you know, I'm, I'm open negotiation as to how much we raise it, the full, what we've got or slightly less, but because it's going to happen. Anyway, that's all.
And I'd like more discussion while it's still fresh.
Okay.
Even if we do wait or don't wait, just so that we see where.
And we certainly can have discussion. I'm just offering that, that some cities don't make the decision tonight. Um, you guys are the council and I'm going to run this meeting and I'm going to give you opportunities to speak, but eventually, and in finality, you guys will make the decision and make the motions and vote. Mr. Hilton, are you still able to contact us if you need to?
Yes, sir.
Okay, just making sure you're, is it four o'clock in the morning there yet or what time we got there?
Uh, it is, um, 4:30.
Okay. Thanks for sticking with us. All right.
Mayor, if I could just, just, I want to, just a word of caution. So we are, we are in a, a meeting and it has been agended, so we can only talk about what's that. We keep bringing in these water discussions, that's not on the agenda.
Yeah, no.
Technically, I mean, if we're going to pull that in at all, we're going to have to do another meeting.
Yeah.
It doesn't matter, it's still illegal for us to do that. So I'm just saying, we got to focus strictly on what we have, not anything else.
Not discussing the water rates, we're discussing, and so our first agenda item to deal with right now is a consideration of a resolution to adopt a certified tax rate, um, the one that Mr. Carden has specified or, or a different one, um, for the fiscal year, uh, 2023. Any other discussion? Counselor Arnold?
So just asking the staff, we, we cut the tax rate to the 11, 750, whatever. We take that list, police officer, police officer, fire, 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 code enforcement, emergency preparedness manager. We cut the tax rate, we scratch off one of those. Is that right?
Yeah, that's, that's what I said at some point in time, we're going to meet as a staff and prioritize that. We already know that's going to change. That was the wish list that we came up with early on. So there will be some differences already. We know one of those firefighters has already been filled. So what the plan is, is once we prioritize that, depending on how much money we have, then we'll come back to you and say, this is what we've got, this is what you've given us, this is our plan. We want to do this and this and this and this, to get further direction from the council on what we're going to do. So we, we just need a number so we know what we're working with and we got to sit down and factor everything in at that point, so. Does that answer your question, Alan? Is that what you meant?
Yeah. I mean, I knew the answer, I was just doing it for everybody else because it, I mean, so we've been going through this every two weeks for our meetings for months and months going through this. And, and I would ask Rich to, um, take Michelle Johnson's idea and reach out when we're talking about our budget to Weber Human Services, to get them on board with our senior center, things like that with our budget that this could affect, right? Um, so, I mean, there's only a few people here and I don't know how many people are watching, but we're elected by the residents and I really take that seriously. Um, but also, you know, with the employees who do the harm, in harms way stuff, I really, um, you know, I'm, I fall on that side because I want them to go home. And, uh, there, there's a few things within our budget that actually, when the next budget item that we can, we can deal with. But one of the things that, that Steve said that I truly disagree with is to give credit to the previous councils who did not do this, didn't raise the rates. Um, I've been on the council for 10 years, um, and I, I, I would, I'm almost embarrassed. Um, one of the things that the state has actually done is they've, they've taken over the water system. So I wish Hank Cragan was here, he was here earlier and he left, but he's my neighbor. He hits me all the time about the founding fathers of Riverdale said, you know, we, we don't want to put in secondary water because we're going to keep our water rates low and we want to do that. Then the state comes in and changes it and says it has to be an enterprise fund. And the, the state says, this is the way you're going to run your city. And it's over and over, even zoning, they're looking at taking over zoning, so we wouldn't have anything to say about it. So there's a lot of things like that. Riverdale Road is a state road, it's UDOT. And UDOT is so much bigger than Riverdale that, you know, they pick up the paper and go, sorry, I don't know what you're saying and hang up or, they're probably not that bad, but they, they're a lot bigger than us. Um, but the, the thing is, one of the things that we've actually done that we've passed while I've been on the council is like the sewer rates. The sewer rates go up every year. And in the past, the council has reserved some of those things and gone up, uh, like the sewer rate goes up and then the council goes boom and all of a sudden you feel it. So we've started passing it through that it's, if the sewer rates go up, we just pass that through. It's nothing to do with us. I mean, we're water-sucking garbage. When you run for election and people are asking you about the national news and all that kind of stuff, we're water-sucking garbage, that kind of stuff. Um, with the streets and all that kind, that's the stuff we do. But the thing is, um, and I, I know anytime you have a tax rate go up, because I'm then on the national side as well, I hear that. This, this is painful. One of the things that the mayor has, has talked about, he's talked to other mayors and they're saying, you know what, you're absolutely crazy for raising this all at one time on a, on a 94%. a 94%. It's still $15 a month, which is $15 a month, it's still $15 a month. It's, it's, can be crucial, but the thing is, it's, it's where we're at. And I've, I've resolved, one of the things that I said is, I'm in full support of this as long as it goes to public safety. I am not happy with the city, we gotta, all employees got a big raise this year, are going to get a big raise, and I, it's inappropriate, that thing's inappropriate. I would rather the public safety people get what they need to go home, than this raise that we went through, this $100,000 furniture thing. I I tried to take it out of the budget, and I screwed up with a motion, and I was laughed at when it was done. And I'm hoping to undo that tonight. But the thing is, this particular item is important, and it's, it's something that I have said publicly that I'm in favor of, just because I support our public safety guys. When you see on the internet and see a Home Depot go up in flames, that you can watch on YouTube, crazy, these these guys can't do anything but go there and with marshmallows and stuff, you know, but but they go by themselves in a truck, I mean, by themselves in a truck, and it's crazy. And, you know, they're not sitting back, you know, waiting for something to happen to us before they go in and do something. So as unpopular as this is, and as unpopular as every mayor in the county is is thinking this, I I would be in favor of of taking the brunt of this, because I'm, I mean, it's, I think it needs to happen. It's for the where the city's at in 2022, where we're gonna be in 2030, with all the information that we've been given, month after month after month, I mean, we've seen this thing. But I also, like Lynette Gro said, we need to sharpen our pencils, we need to to get in and do some of these things, because this isn't done, this isn't the end of it, this is, this is where we're at today, and hopefully, we can sharpen our pencils and not do this next year, and the next year, and the next year. So I personally would be in favor of of taking the medicine. And if anybody wants to talk to me, I mean, I'll I'll talk with somebody all day long. Jim, I I spend a lot of time talking with Jim about anything and everything. So if you wanna know where we're at, because we do have all that information, we can get you numbers, if you want numbers, we can get you the, the police reports, the fire reports, I mean, everything that they do for us. So, I mean, this, this medicine sucks, but I would be in favor of taking care of it tonight.
Other comments? Thank you, Mr. Arnold. Councilor Arnold. Councilor Merrill.
So obviously, this information, a lot of it is very new, this whole process is very new to me. But I've been grateful for everything that I've been able to learn, especially tonight with the new information that I feel a lot of the residents brought to the table. And I guess, for me, I would definitely need more time to look this over, but that's just because I'm so new at all of this. But I'm willing to, you know, continue to put in the work to learn it. So I would like the additional time. However, I do understand that this has been gone over very thoroughly, and decisions do need to be made, especially with timelines encroaching and everything. I guess I have a question for those that are definitely way more versed in this than I am. Was there anything tonight that was either shared, or, I guess, eyes opened to new understandings of anything that hinged any of the kind of going forward with things? Or maybe forced some more contemplation on these things, like, to consider anything different? Or has all this just been understood by everyone in here?
Councilor Hanson.
There's been a lot of behind the scenes, especially on my part. I know I've been harassing the staff quite a bit about this, trying to think of, just like, I appreciate the comments everyone said, there were no surprises. These are all difficult things that I know I've been thinking about, and I know that the other city councilors have been thinking about as well, and the staff. None of us could have anticipated the financial state of our lives at this point. My property tax is gonna go up $1,000 a year. I have over $100,000 in school debt. It's a big deal. And I'm not one paycheck away from being homeless, but it's difficult, this isn't easy. I have a widowed grandmother who lives on a railroad pension from my grandfather. I have, my parents are pensioners. This, this hits all of us very closely, especially those of us who have family in Riverdale. And so we have discussed it, we've talked about, should we take money from the rainy day account, which I know Cody hates that term, but should we take money from these savings accounts where the employees have worked so hard over the last, since 2005, if you look at these financial charts? Our employees have done incredible things. And because of the guidance of the city council at that point and all the way through, you know, they've made the city survive. When 2009 happened, and I was upside down in a townhouse, the city had no layoffs, the city had no financial issues because of the efforts of the staff. The staff have been amazing. And so I know that if we pass this, I know, I know that they will be accountable for the funds that they know that they're asking from those of us who are struggling. And I appreciate the advice from the employees that we don't know what next year looks like, and what if it's worse, what if it's better, what if, you know, valuations go down, and we're all in a much better, safer spot? We can't predict the future, and so we're in such a difficult situation. I recently had a coworker die at work where I had to be involved with handling that. And the idea of that happening in Riverdale, I don't think I could handle it, I'll be honest. And I apologize for being so emotional, but these are very serious things, and I, I appreciate everybody's situation, and it's difficult. But I especially appreciate your accountability for the last 10 years, because it's been hard to listen to people talk about, well, if only a previous council would have done it. I, we have four amazing city council members who've been here who could have done it. And I know why they didn't, because look at what this is like for all of us, it's awful. I completely understand why that would have been avoided. But, but we have, we've turned over every stone, I've come up with the craziest ideas that they're like, we've thought of it, that's not gonna work, what happens when the city center falls down, and now we don't have our rainy day fund to take care of these issues? I'm torn, because if it makes you feel better that we reduce it, $4, you know, that's $4, I know they'll make it work. But I know that we need every penny that we've asked for. And so that, that is a tricky situation, but I don't know if that answers your questions, but that's kind of where I'm at. I want everyone to know how much time and effort has gone in to look for every possible solution up to this point for years, really. And the work that's been put in by the staff to even get us to this point, and that we even still have a fire department, which could have been gone a long time ago, but because of their efforts and the efforts of the elected officials, we've made it here. And it's not an easy place to be, but I think we can make it through. So I guess I could vote tonight, if you guys, if we have enough people who want to, but I'm open to waiting also, if we need the time.
Well, and with that said, sorry, Mayor, just real quick, with that said, thank you, I do appreciate that. I feel like I can maybe stand on, on dual ground here in terms of being a little bit newer to this information, but also shocked by it, especially with all the questions and all the calls that I'm sure all of us get, and all the concerns, especially for those that are on fixed income. I feel like all of us have very tender hearts to that situation, as to those situations as well. But I also echo your sentiment in terms of, I, I trust the evaluations that have been done, I trust the thoroughness that the staff has has done with all of this, especially, I trust the needs of the departments that, that I know are doing their best. And I, and I think with that, yeah, hard decisions need to be made, but I feel like the scope of what's most important here has definitely been covered. And so thank you for the thoroughness of of everyone here, and also for obviously all of the residents and their input in this. But I feel like we have a very good general, maybe even a very specific understanding of what needs to be done.
Steve, did you wanna say something? Is that you raising your hand?
I didn't raise my hand, but yes, I'd like to say something. I, it's, it's, it's kind of different being up at 4 o'clock in the morning, listening to all this, and, and instead of being in the room. But I, I want the citizens there, and the citizens that have spoken, and really, all the citizens to know that it, it breaks all of our hearts to be raising taxes. None of us want to do that. If we raise taxes, we're raising them on ourselves as well. Some of us are on fixed incomes or or reduced incomes, and, and none of this is pleasant. I think we appreciate all of the input we have received. It's important, I think, to note that Riverdale is blessed with really a set of outstanding employees, some extremely knowledgeable, extremely dedicated, mostly long term employees that keep this city running well. And I'm proud of the city and the way it is run, and the city leaders on staff. And I believe they've done everything they can and thought through everything they can think of for the last 15 years to try to make this all work, and they have sacrificed, and it has gotten to a point where some council, some city council at some point has to take action. And unfortunately, that falls on our heads. And this is a horrible time to be doing this. And none of us wanna do this. And I have a feeling that my, my, something's going wrong with my internet, but if I'm, if you're still hearing me, I, I'm in favor, I guess, of taking action on this as well. I think we all know we're gonna, we're gonna do this, it's just a degree of, of if we're gonna try to duck a little bit and, and not do what I think we all know we have to do.
Any other comments? Councilor Arnold.
I just have one question. Katrina, do you want time? Because you're gonna be voting on this, so if it's a yes or no, it's, I mean, I think anybody should be comfortable with what they're doing. So if you want, if you want the time and meet next week or something like that, any, any one of us that needs more time would be appropriate.
I'm just not sure that more time will necessarily be the difference here, if that makes sense. I feel like what was covered has been, has been covered. I don't know how much more is gonna change that. That's kind of why I wanted to ask you guys, was there anything tonight that changed any of, I, I mean, of course, it emphasized things and brought stuff more to the surface, but was there anything in your guys' opinion that kind of changed that or hinged anything as far as the decision making goes? And if, and if not, I, I trust what's happened, and I trust what's taken place, that I would feel comfortable with voting tonight? Would I also like more time? Yeah. I'm not sure more time, though, would change my decision, if that makes sense.
And I would like to ask Rich, I mean, even with Weber Human Services, I mean, and you're brand new to the, so maybe it's Cody or something, but that, that's a relatively small item on the budget, right? I mean, if Weber Human Services got in, we're talking maybe tens of thousands of dollars, if, if that.
Remember, we gave you a handout, and I don't remember right off the top of my head, but I think the senior center, it was less than 150,000, and I think it was around like 100,000. And then once you take the revenue out of it, it was even less than that. So it's, yeah, it's not gonna get you policemen, it's not gonna get you firemen.
I'm just bringing that out, just so people understand.
Yeah.
But Alan, I think, I thought that was a great suggestion, one of the things that the citizens brought up tonight, that we probably ought to take a look at, it probably isn't really pertinent to the issue at hand tonight on the public safety aspect of what we plan to do with this money. But I think that is something that we ought to look into.
Just for your information, we have talked about some of these things already, and even exported a little bit further a year or so ago, but with Rich being fairly new on board, we have discussed some of these things, those are all on the table, just like I said, nothing's off at this point. So any solutions we can look at, again, we just need some direction. First of all, we need to know what we're working with money wise, and then we'll come back and request direction on, you know, specifics where you want us to go exactly, after we've come up with some solutions. So that's just where we're at. We, we, we actually have talked about these things, so.
Councilor Stevens.
You know, we have been talking this now for months, we've spent a lot of time, and there has been a lot of discussion on how much of an increase. And, you know, you, you always go big and then back it off, because you can't go halfway and then go up. And so it's, it's a matter of, you know, we, we, we don't know what the final numbers are. Excuse me. The budget is, is based on what we're going to get, or what we think we're going to get in revenues, primarily sales tax. Something goes sideways, the projected budget has to be altered, because we don't have the revenue we thought we were going to get, excuse me. And so the, the budget is somewhat nebulous. I mean, yeah, we pass a budget because we have to, based on what we project the revenues are gonna be. And every year, we go through tweaking, moving money here, move because we didn't need it, or we need it more here. I mean, thing was, this year was fuel, fuel costs are incredible. And so that wasn't budgeted, and so we had to, anyway, you get the point. And so it's just a matter of what is the rate we're gonna do? That's, that's the issue. And we've heard, and I think the people that were in attendance, said, you know what, does it have to be this much, this soon, this sudden? And so do we back it off the $4 a month? I don't believe it's just $4 a month, but, you know, do, what do we back it off to? Or do we go big and go what we've, what we've said? Because it's always best to go big and then back up. I don't know, I'm, I'm, I could be persuaded either way, but I think maybe backing it off a little bit is not a bad thing at this point.
Thank you. Councilor Arnold.
So if we back it off, who do we lose? You gotta have an emergency preparedness manager. We need the code enforcement, because Randy's going over to the emergency preparedness. So do we lose a firefighter or a police officer if you back it down?
Those are things we gotta look at, I mean, it's.
You know what? Lose the furniture. Who's the, that's 100,000, I'm hoping to address that, but.
Just as a reminder, that, that 100,000's in the capital project fund, so it really doesn't, doesn't make a difference.
But, I mean, you, you don't have an answer, you don't have an answer for my question. So I'm saying with your comment, what's your answer to the question? Police or fire? Do we lose?
I think that's a very immature way to approach.
Turn that on, turn that on. A very immature way to approach it, who do we lose? We don't lose anybody. We, we, we work the budget to facilitate what is needed.
So how does a motion, how's a motion structured for the tax rate?
If you keep it the way it was proposed, you would just make a motion to adopt that tax rate, and then we would follow that up with a motion to adopt the final budget, which was based upon that tax rate.
Is that written in here somewhere? The tax rate of what?
It's just in the packet with 2A.
Yeah, 2A.
The amended tax rate is 0.001420.
That's what's given to us.
1420.
That was that, the, the number that we had presented to you previously, that we based everything on. So it's that higher number, the one that we've been talking about all night. So if you back off from that, we would have to amend that resolution back to whatever you decide to do. If you go forward, it's ready to go right now.
Okay, so it's point, I'm sorry, what, we have point 000? Okay, so it's point, I'm sorry, what, we have point 000?
001242.
Three zeros? Was it only two zeros? Oh, it is two zeros now. That's good.
It's right, hold on.
I guess that's not good, but.
Three zeros is better.
Three zeros is better, but it's less to keep track of.
Yeah, it's point 001420.
I guess I do too, actually. It's not good. I like the point 0007, but we can't keep that up forever.
So it's this right here. You guys can see that. But, so this is, so we build in this amount additional, and then that's the rate. That's where we come up with the $15. So it generated total estimate amount of property tax of that amount.
Is your mic on?
Sorry. So it generated, there's the additional property tax, that's the rate. That's where we come up with the $15 amount. This would be the total property tax rate generated. That's the 94.79% increase. If you remember, we used part of that to pay for fuel and like other small increases. So there's about 700,000 left. So with what's in the packet and in the budget, is that right there?
Okay, so if you back it off, is it zero, say 25, is it 25 basis points? Seven, two nine?
So it's easier if you tell me money. So like, let's say, instead of 750, we do, should we pull 100 grand out? So if we do 650, 570, so that reduces the rate down to point, to 0.001328. The average increase would be $13.09 a month. It would generate that much in property taxes. So it'd be 600,000 of additional property tax.
That was, that's the purpose of my question of the people that we're talking about. The reason for this thing is, we take somebody off, we take a policeman off, we can take off that amount. Because the dollar value is what basically runs this whole thing. Because the property value and tax rate don't mean a whole lot. The dollar value does. So if we said we're striking one police officer, we lose 210,000?
Yeah, approximately. And so, right. And so like what we were thinking is, if you could give us an, it's kind of hard because it's the chicken or the egg, right? But if you give us an amount, if you're like, hey, we don't feel comfortable with that amount, let's do this amount, then what we'd like to do, like Steve said, is bring it back to you and say, okay, we want to hire a policeman. Say we hire one policeman, one fireman, and then we're like, okay, that costs us this amount on the budget. So then we've got X left, okay? So then we can say, okay, we can hire one more policeman, one more fireman, but then we're out, or we can do this. So it's kind of hard, you know, like, I don't, is that kind of answer your question?
Well, that's, that's why I kind of want a hard number more than, I mean, if we back it down, we should back it down for a reason. You know, we minus one, one police officer, one fireman, we know exactly what that dollar amount is. Because if we just do an arbitrary number, we have money left over. And, I mean, this, this has been specifically set aside for public safety, hopefully, right? So.
The bulk of it's gonna go to public safety. I mean, that, that was the plan all along, but that doesn't, I mean, where that goes, I don't know. I mean, that's, that's kind of what we're talking about. I mean, if we look at it when you say, what are we gonna lose? We're not gonna lose anything from either one of them right now. So then we gotta sit down and say, okay, which one's the greater need? And then evaluate it that way. And we've got to kind of critique it and say, okay, this is more pressing than this one or vice versa. And that's where we're gonna come up with that. But then I still have every intention to come back in and say, okay, this is what we come up with. This is how, we're gonna get to that number. That's not gonna be an issue. We will get to the number one way or another. Even like I said in my presentation, even at the 750, we're already below that if we, if we did what we had originally proposed. We're already exceeding it. So we will get to the number. It's just a matter of how we get there. So we just need it. Is it gonna be that higher one or is it gonna be a lower one? Then we gotta make adjustments based upon that. So somebody won't get something they wanted, that's for sure.
Counselor Merrill, let's have you talk first.
Sorry, just real quick. Isn't what got us to this point to begin with was going through these hard numbers? Correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't we go through this based on the need that we, you guys more so, felt was needed in this situation? And so is that up, like, are we negotiating that all over again? Is that, or I guess what I'm trying to say is, can't we trust that that was already determined as far as what's needed? Or is that still up for discussion?
No, that, that was what we said, we need this now, if we're gonna fulfill these responsibilities.
I think what Steve's saying, let me try and clarify a little bit. If we go back to that list and I can.
It's like 850,000.
Right, it's more money than we asked for. So we weren't gonna get the whole list no matter what. So we're somewhat gonna have to prioritize regardless because we didn't ask for enough to get the whole list. Because if you remember, we kept asking you guys, well, like, how much do you want to do? And you're like, I don't know. How much do you guys want to do? And we're like, well, we don't, you know, like, this is our needs. And then you're like, well, we don't want to do more than 100%, so that's where we kind of ended up at the 95%. So we weren't gonna get the whole list anyways.
So you're saying we already have to kind of cut that list or trim stuff here and there?
Potentially. Like, we're gonna have to look at it, and that's why we've always tried to word it. Hold on, let me show you. The, right here. So you can see like that list is, if this is gonna go, come on, is 875,000, right? So we've only got like 700,000. So we're gonna have to prioritize it anyways, but we subtracted off a fireman already. So we're gonna have to do like a little massaging anyways, if you will.
Yeah, Counselor Stevens. Okay, we had a retirement on police. Is he off? Is that retirement? Because we've had this, this job announcement.
Are we not paying an employee there? Correct. Right. And then, you know, if you think about it this way too, we're, we're now in August. So if that 210,000's correct, then we're already like a month and a half in and we haven't hired an employee, right? So that 210's kind of.
Existing replacements is not gonna cost, because we have the vehicle, we have the infrastructure for that officer.
Some of it, yes, some of it.
As a replacement officer, not for a new officer, for a.
For a replacement officer. For that position, we've already got everything.
Okay, so he's not, that replacement's not costing 210, he's costing significantly less.
But he's not on this list.
He's not on here, but that's still money we're saving because he's not. We're saving it right now.
Right.
Saving it at the moment.
At the moment. And so we've kind of got to do this balancing act, if you will, of looking at, okay, what's the new, what's like, so let's say a policeman. Or like, let's do firemen. Firemen's easy. So they don't change much each year. Because if you think about it, like, they have their uniforms and their turnouts, and that's about it. And then like an Office 365 license, they need that same stuff every year. And so that amount's not gonna change a ton. Scott's guys are the exact opposite. Like, in the first year, like, I was showing the mayor this list, and I think he was blown away by how much stuff's in this 210,000. Because they've got like tasers and guns and, and like not SWAT gear, but like riot gear and all sorts of stuff. So there's a ton of stuff that's like upfront, front-loading on those. So we're gonna kind of have to look at it and say, yeah, a little bit of the year's gone. But then part of it comes back to who they hire. So if they hire like a seasoned officer, which they love to do because then we've got an awesome guy day one, we're gonna be more than the 210. Because a new guy, we didn't, in that 210, that doesn't include like a guy more the top of the scale. We took like an average. Yeah. So that's, so to say, yeah, like, it's gonna cost this exact amount. We can't really pin that down until we hire until, you know what I mean? Like, we, so anyways, I know confusing is, but that's kind of what it is. So that's where in a lot of ways it's easier. If you tell us what you feel comfortable with, like, obviously, the more you give us, the more we can get for it. But that's where Steve's saying, I think, like, hey, we wanna like go to Scott, go to Jared and say, okay, what's your most pressing need? Bring that to the council, hire that. Okay, we got this much money left over. Okay, what can we get for this? What you guys, what does the council feel the best with? Okay, let's get that. Okay, now we're right here. Let's get that and use that money as like carefully as we can and try not to waste a dollar of it. But exactly what stuff's gonna cost, we don't know. I hope that kind of explains it. And like, even if it's a tier one guy versus tier two guy, you know, there's, there's a lot of variables.
Right. And the other, I'm so sorry. The other part was is, even if we approve it, the ability to get these guys immediately right out of the gate is, is, I mean, this is gonna take time to find. Because every one of these folks are not, there's not an abundance of them. There, you have to, you have to kind of go, I don't know, poach them from somebody else.
I don't think there's any employee right now for any employer that there's like an overabundance for. And public safety's like at a premium, right?
But, you know, it's, I don't know. And so it's, it's like, you know, when you're given a this or that, which one are you not gonna have? Well, you know, you're not gonna be able to fill the slots for the policeman immediately. That's gonna take a little time. You're not gonna be able to fill these slots. It just takes time to find the fit, the people. Well, maybe firemen. I don't know how long it takes. It takes a little time, yeah. And so it's not a question of who you're gonna give up, who you're gonna go without. It's a matter of transitioning to, to bring them in as they become available.
Right. But to Counselor Arnold's point, like, if you approve the full amount, we're gonna get way more.
It's, you're gonna have more.
And, and we're gonna have a way better, robust public safety system than if you approve half of it. And, but it's kind of the chicken and the egg.
I mean, that's worrisome that we can't, you know, a month and a half and we don't have the police officer? And that's, that, that surge has been out there? That's, that's, that's a crisis. I mean, that's, that's, but that's systemic. That's not.
Right. And we did get to hire, like Shelley's got, I think he started today, didn't he? Your full-time guy? So we did get a new full-time fireman. Remember, we had that. We converted some part-timers to a full-timer in the current year budget. And so he was able to find somebody and hire somebody there. So we have got that. So we just don't know how long it's gonna take. So.
Brayden, can I jump in for just a second?
Yeah, absolutely, Counselor Hill. And we can't see you, so I'm glad you said something, just because the way the screen is right now. Please, please speak up if you need to do, to say anything.
Okay, I, I think that we're kind of all on the same page here, really. We, I think that we have all agreed that whatever tax increase we vote for is gonna primarily go for public safety and spirit and not get wasted on stupid stuff. So I think that, you know, I get that you have to negotiate salaries and, and, you know, when you hire somebody, then you'll know how much you have left and all. So I think we all, we all can agree that that's the plan. And, and so the bottom line really is, we set a maximum tax increase with the, with the state. And, and that's what's being proposed. And the question is, I think we all know the city can certainly use the full amount. And it doesn't make up for the previous councils not having acted on this sooner. And we're still gonna have an issue next year. And so the question isn't really, do we need that full amount? It is, should we do the full amount or is that in some way offset by reducing it? And I think that, I forget who asked this question of the citizens, but the question was asked, does $4 make that much difference? Does $7 make that much difference? And I don't know that there's a good answer to that. I think that, my view is, the folks that spoke towards the fixed incomes and the, and the, essentially the overwhelming nature of the, what seems like, you know, 100% increase but is in reality 100 bucks for the average homeowner and 15 bucks a month. And are they really benefited by a reduction in that amount compared to the city benefiting from the getting the full amount? That's, I think, the issue we have to decide at this point. Should we, should we get the city what it clearly needs and start down that road and, and continue it next year and the year after? Or should we, for essentially compassionate reasons or perhaps even political reasons, back off a little bit?
Real quick, Counselor Stevens? Okay, whatever we pass, is it retroactive to July 1?
That's a loaded question. Can we say January 1? Because really, January 1st is the assessment date on your property of the current year. And so like if you, so like, say you're building a house and you'd only poured the foundation as of January 1st, that should be the S-value on that property. And so in effect, this property tax kind of goes back till January 1st, even though we're adopting it now.
Revenues on this higher rate, whatever that rate is, from seven, eight months ago, or seven and a half months ago.
Well, for the whole tax year, if you will.
Tax year is the calendar year.
So like in November, when, or the end of October sometimes, when like the county sends the assessments to the individual taxpayers, it's gonna be for the point 001420.
For the calendar year.
Yes, it won't be prorated.
Oh, interesting. So we could, we could easily back off and, and because.
So the thing with backing off, which is fine, you can do whatever you want. I'm just providing information. You're not gonna get another one of those positions until this time of next year.
But it'd be, it will be effective January, January 1 of 23?
For the resident, for the, for the property owner, yes.
Well, as you said, you won't get another opportunity till by the time next year.
City, like, it wouldn't get them another employee until this time of next year. Does that make sense? Does that answer your question? So for, so like for Counselor Hanson, she's gonna pay $180 more for this whole year if you guys approve the point 001420 tonight.
I've seen her house. It's a lot more than 470,000.
But then the downside to going backwards is just keep in mind, we won't get another chance to do this for the city. The city won't get any more money until this time next year. So does that kind of answer your question?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm going to call a little bit of, that's a bit of a fallacy because, now, tax revenues come in, what, once a year?
We get them all year.
Okay. So we won't get another chance to raise it, but the thing about, she brought up, Councilwoman Hanson brought up, go dipping into the rainy day fund. The problem with that, that's a one-time. It doesn't, it's not reoccurring. Whereas this is reoccurring. And so we can, we can dip into the rainy day fund and repay it with.
The problem with doing that is it's awful budgeting practices to pay for ongoing expenditures, new ongoing expenditures out of the rainy day fund. Because what if next year's worse? Then what do we do? Because now we've got a full-time employee that we can't fire, really. And then what do you guys do? Like, then do you potentially, so let's say, okay, so let's paint this picture for you. So we dip into the rainy day fund and we hire this employee. Police wages keep going up. Next year at this time, like, let's say they get, they've got big increases. Let's say they get a 20% increase next year is what our salary system would, would give them. But it's worse. Inflation's just as bad, which it could be. And let's say the economy is worse, then can you give those police and keep the police you already have with, you know, like, or can you give them those 20% raises and keep them? Or are they all gone? Because we've lost all flexibility at that point. So I would say you either fund the new positions now by a property tax increase or you wait till next year. Don't, don't play with like the rainy day fund for ongoing expenditures.
Well, it's a one-time expenditure.
It's not. It's not. It's not. It's not. Because you're not giving us money for it. So you've committed us to that for here on out, but you haven't given us money for it.
I, I think.
But anyways.
The fact that we're even considering doing this kind of, kind of illustrates the desperate situation that we are in. The fact that we're even considering dipping into the rainy day fund for recurring expenses, I mean, illustrates the problem that we're, that we're having.
Right, right. So at some point, it's like, if you feel bad enough for us that we need a new guy, then fund it. And let's do it right. Let's not have, you know, like Counselor Arnold was saying, like, let's not have like another problem.
I'm struggling with, because I thought it was gonna be retro to July 1, but if it's retro.
It's retro to July 1 in our fiscal year budget. But like your personal escrow account?
Revenue from, for, from January 1.
We, yes and no. We don't, like, in effect, so we get property tax revenue every month, but it's for the delinquent people who haven't paid.
So we get that windfall in January or whenever that is.
Right. So we get. So we get a bunch in December and we get a bunch in January. And then we get a little bit throughout the rest of the year as people pay their taxes late.
So this, this increase.
We won't get, so if we, say you adopt this full increase tonight, we won't, whatever it is, we won't get a dollar of it until like December, January. But on your personal residence, it goes back to January 1st, because that's how the property tax system works in Utah. Clear as mud? But, but it's my like recommendation as the city's finance director that like either fund it or you don't. If it's that dire of a need, then fund it. If you don't feel that it's that dire of need, then, then fund like those increases.
Right there.
Even if you do fund a point, and it's not enough.
Well, we're way better off than we are today, right? For sure.
And, and the point of it is, is we raised taxes, the franchise tax, which was almost this much last December. Did we get anybody to say anything? No, because it was done so quietly. But anyway, that's, that's another issue.
So I think these poor people have been here long enough. Um, I think, uh, we've been discussing this for 10 months, almost it feels like. So, um, I think, I think if a motion would probably be in order, um, if anyone's willing to make it. Counselor Arnold?
Motion to approve Resolution 2022-30, adopting a certified tax rate for the city of Riverdale for the fiscal year 2023, which is July 1st, 2022 to June 30th, 2023, as stated within the packet. And if, at the rate of point 00142.
And I would say, say the revenue too, just so we're super.
The revenue.
So an additional revenue.
An additional revenue, I think it's 75570.
Of 75570 with additional revenues.
Okay, we have a motion.
Specifically put for public safety.
It's part of the motion?
Can I see that in writing before we vote on that?
Yep.
I mean, you would, you would have to amend the resolution. The resolution doesn't say that.
Well, he just didn't, he just said it.
Right, right. But he would have to amend the resolution that's in your packet right now, so.
Okay.
What, one of the questions I have on that is do we consider code enforcement and our emergency manager as part of, of public safety? So that might eliminate that.
That was the sales pitch on, for public safety. I mean, I've been pushing public safety since this thing opened.
Well, we, we felt that it included that. I just want that clarified, because certainly code enforcement goes there.
I believe code enforcement and the emergency, what, what are you calling him? Emergency.
Emergency manager, yeah.
Is public safety. Cause Randy, I mean, Randy has that hat, but as far as in writing, I mean, it's right there and I just read it off the.
But it does not mention public safety there.
Alan, can we, you could make a motion per interlineation to address that that be added in there?
Okay. Uh, Counselor Hilton, did you have something to say?
My question was, can we agree, you know, uh, for lack of a better term, sorry ladies, a gentleman's agreement with the, with, uh, Mr. Brooks, that this will be used for public safety? And we'll see, and specifically advise the council otherwise. And if that's true, then I suggest Alan drop that amendment so that we can just proceed.
Okay, so we have a motion, and you're not going to change it right now. Okay, so we have a motion, do we have a second? Okay, the, the motion dies for lack of a second. So now proceed, Counselor Hilton.
All right, then I'll make the same motion. And I don't have it in front of me to read, so quoting Alan with the exception of, uh, no caveat on the direction that it be used would be included in the motion.
Is that a good enough motion, Mr. Brooks as the attorney?
Yeah, that works. And, and to add to that, we're still coming back into, you're still going to have some say in this, so, um, I don't know that I'd worry too much about it. I mean, we will come back in before anything's put in place, so.
And, and let me just, just comment on the motion.
Actually, Counsel Stevens, well, yeah, Counsel Stevens, you have a question?
I'm not comfortable with, with it and, and, um, Steve, would you allow me, would it be all right if I made the motion reading it instead of what, what was stated?
All right, so is there a second on Counselor Hilton's?
I define with that, Bart.
Is there a second on Counselor Hilton's motion? Seeing none, that motion dies. Counselor Stevens, did you have something to say?
Can I just add one thing? If you reference, do that amount and the tax rate, if you're doing the full amount.
What are you pointing to?
This right here, can you see that 1.5? Let me make it bigger. So that would be the revenue and that would be the tax rate, if you're doing the whole thing.
Revenue of, is that a hundred and?
It's a million 542. So that's the increase of the, the 750.
And, uh, with the tax rate?
Yeah, if you say both of those, we should be ultra clear.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution, let's see, am I in the right one?
2022-30.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, uh, propose to adopt the Resolution 2022-30, adopting a certified tax rate for the city of Riverdale for the fiscal year of 2023, July 1, 2022 to June 30th, 2023, with revenue of 1,542,416, which is a tax rate of point 001420.
Okay, we have a motion. Ms. Marigoni, do you need us to, was there a second? We're going to allow the recorder to catch up?
Who, who, second?
No second yet, I don't think. Um, at least not that I've heard.
Catching up.
Okay, the recorder is caught up. We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Counselor Arnold?
Uh, the reason I don't like this is because we're bringing in 1.5 million dollars to the city that can be spent anyway. Uh, we just gave an 8% uh, salary increase to the entire city, which with the inflation, I mean, I still have heartburn with it, but I voted for it. Um, the hundred thousand dollars for furniture, I have a serious problem with that. And this, this money, all along in this entire discussion, has been for public safety, period. At no point have we brought that into the, the coffers of the city in a general form like this. And so if we approve this particular motion, it, it comes into the city and it can be done in any way and it's not earmarked for public safety. And we can do a gentleman's agreement and things like that, but it's still not earmarked for public safety. If it's in the motion, it's for public safety and that's where I'm supporting it. If it's, if it's this motion, I will not be supporting it.
Can we address that in the second action item when we've approved the budget?
I was going to say, so we do still approve the budget, right? We are, we still.
Right. And so if you remember how we set this up, we talked about this like in June. So I have that amount, that 697,000 in like the non-departmental. So we really can't spend it until we come back and do a budget amendment with you guys and say, hey, we want to move this money to police, to fire, to fund these positions. And so in, in my mind, like we really can't spend it.
I would really like this motion and this to be unanimous, if possible.
So to, to address, um, Councilman Arnold's concerns, this is, can still be, is the word earmarked or directed exclusively for public safety?
Right, when you do the.
Microphone.
Right, when you do the budget amendment and you move it. Cause the problem is, is it's general, it's property tax revenue, so it really can't, it's unrestricted funds. So how you guys dictate where it goes is through the budget.
Not passing the, the rate hike.
I, yes. I mean, you can, does that make sense?
The money's not going anywhere until you come back to the council and say, we're ready for a new police officer. We're ready for emergency manager. And that's when the ta, new tax money will be moved and not until we say so.
Exactly.
But it can also be put forth somewhere else if they say.
If we say so.
This is why, yeah, right. I mean, and as we come through the budget, it's just like, we have a hundred thousand dollars for furniture, because I said the wrong.
Maybe not in 10 minutes or a while.
20, 2022-21 instead of 2022.
Right, and you're going to probably fix that in 10 minutes, I bet.
I hope so.
So anyways, like.
But it's been a month and a half that I've been worrying about it, so.
Well, and I haven't spent it, cause like, I mean, you guys would probably get rid of it. So anyways, like I don't think you need to be super concerned, because we can't do anything with the money until we get a budget amendment from you guys.
That won't be till January.
We can do one whenever, like.
Oh, that, you, you, there's any money?
You're right, like technically we won't have the money, but the county's pretty good with, like, we'll collect it, so.
Okay. Any more discussion on this motion? Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. Ms. Marigoni, will you please poll the council on this resolution?
Can you hear me?
No.
I dropped it, okay. Guess I just had to drop it. Uh, Counselor Hilton?
Yes.
Counselor Merrill?
Yes.
Counselor Stevens?
Yes.
Counselor Hanson?
Yes.
Counselor Arnold?
Messing with me. I want it to go through, but no. Now, if it's not directed for public safety, I want to say no.
Okay, motion passes, uh, with four in favor and Counselor Arnold being the lone vote against the budget or against the, against the certified tax rate. Okay, thank you. And thank you to the residents for your patience. We will now move on to Agenda Item B, Consideration of Revolution 2022-31, adopting a budget for the city of Riverdale for fiscal year 2023. Mr. Carden?
My mic should be on. Okay, so everything should be in there. If you want to strike the bu, like the furniture, that would just, if you'd say like in the capital projects fund, if you remember, there's more money than just that on that line item. So if you just say in the capital projects fund, the civic center furniture replacement of a hundred thousand, I want to strike that amount, I think we should be good, as long as Steve's good with that. But everything else should be in place, unless you have questions for me.
Counselor Stevens, you, you look like you have a question or? No, I'm going to, I propose, Counsel, sorry, Counselor Merrill looks like she has something to say as well.
No, I just, I got a little clarification from Annie, so basically it would have to come before us again in order to make sure that it's going to where we designated.
Right, so, um, hold on one sec. Yes, yes, to answer your question, yes. It, it's in one spot. We really can't spend it in that spot, so it's got to come back to you guys so that, um, you can, can you see that? Yeah.
To be moved.
To be moved, and so. With you guys' approval, as the city council.
It can be moved with our approval.
Yes. We can't move it, like Steve and I can't move it. The only way it can be moved is with the city council.
We decide to buy a bunch of furniture for a hundred thousand dollars? We could all vote to move a hundred thousand dollars out for furniture, but if we're all committed to spending it on public safety and those positions, then likely we would never vote for that until it's public safety.
Not all, a majority.
A majority, right.
Right, right. As long as three of you vote for whatever, then it will go towards that purpose. So it's right here, so you can see that's the money right there. We just stuck it right here, so, cause we didn't know how much you guys were going to give us. And so, sorry, I can make that bigger.
Blow that up.
Yep. So there it is, right there. Okay, so does that answer your question? And then?
So you say move, is that a euphemistic term for?
Budget amendment.
You can't spend it slash without direction from?
I would say no, because it's not tied to anything. It's really over all of our purchasing thresholds. So there's really no way that we can like do anything that with that money without you guys' approval.
Okay, so you would say no, but it's a no, right? Like, not only you would say no, it's.
I would say no.
If, if three, if three members of the council say yes, then it's a yes. That's just all it is.
Right, I'm just saying.
If you lose your vote, right? If you lose, you lose, right?
Right.
I'm just confused why we're confused. Like, I'm not understanding why this is confusing.
We trust, we trust them with their analysis and all this stuff, but we don't trust them that they're going to spend it right. We don't trust you guys.
Yes, we do.
Like, we can't move it. To me, that sounds like, okay, we can't spend it, so why aren't we saying we can't spend it?
All right, so, um, let's, uh, get any questions we have out of the way for this, uh, resolution. Is there any discussion on approving this budget?
There's the count number if you want it.
Yeah.
And so it'd just be this right there.
Oh, Bart, Counselor Stevens, you had a comment?
Well, I was going to propose a resolution, to pass Resolution 2022-31, adopting a budget for the Riverdale, city of Riverdale for fiscal year 2023, which is July 1, 2022 to June 30th, 2023.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a motion. Do we have a second? Seeing no second, the motion dies. Counselor Arnold?
Move to approval. So just so you know, I'm going to throw something else in here in a motion, so everybody kind of pay attention. Move to approve Resolution 2022-31, adopting a budget for Riverdale City for fiscal year 2023, July 1 to 2022 to June 30th, 2023, with the removal of a hundred thousand dollars in the capital projects fund for the civic center desk and furniture replacement. And the, the raise for the city council of 4%. I would like to take that out of the budget as well and remove that if possible.
Okay. That's possible, right? All right. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I would like to ask it. Oh, sorry, nevermind, nevermind, no, no.
Let's see if we have a second, let's see if we have a second.
I'll second.
We do have a second. All right, any discussion on the motion?
Is that going to be retro? I mean, that was a big, I mean, I mean, there was, the city council made a fool of itself on June.
21st.
21st.
I'll never forget.
And, and the three council members voting that pay raise for themselves on the same night they voted. And then, I mean, that is, the, I mean.
Well, did you have a question?
It's true, I withdraw the motion.
Because you had a caveat in there to.
I withdraw the motion.
Which will, the whole thing?
He withdrawed after we have a motion and a second, or we vote on it? I think we have to vote on it if we have a motion and a second.
Can I make a comment on that?
We are taking comments, are you done, Counselor Stevens?
Well, I, I just, there was a caveat that Counselor Arnold put in that any member not wanting to have that could deny it. So, um, I mean, if the people, if the, if the majority said, put it in, why take it out now? I mean, what's the rationale behind it? I don't know what the rationale.
Tell them in the motion to withdraw that if the second will go along with that. I'll withdraw the.
Counselor Hanson, did you have something to say real quick?
I wouldn't approve it as the second, because I would never have voted for the city council to have a raise if I would have been here in person at that council meeting. We cannot ask the residents to pay a higher property tax rate and then give ourselves a raise. It's, doesn't make any sense. So I appreciate that you want to fix it. So if you want to change your motion, I won't second it.
Thank you for your comment.
I won't change the motion, she seconded it and all that commentary was worthless.
Can I make a comment? Can we get like guidance if that's retroactive or not? So we're not left guessing? Cause he didn't say.
I think he.
Did he?
Budget coming up.
He just amended the motion.
We got paid.
One and a half months.
Okay, you know what? We have a protocol.
Yeah, so like you've already, like if you voted, like if you took that increase, you've already got it. So we need to know.
Pay check last time.
Right, so we need to know, is that retroactive or is that from this point forward? Cause that's how the budget works, we explained that to you guys.
He just removed it from the motion, right?
No.
Oh, you're adding it back in.
So if I remove it, you have to second it or, or go along with it. This is getting convoluted, instead of just voting for the stupid.
Are you making a new amendment to say it's retro?
If she says no, then you're going to have to vote on that.
You seconded and we'll make it retroactive.
I would second that.
July 1st, just to be. July first, just to be ultra clear. Okay.
So could you restate the motion real, just, just for us, and then we get the second very clear?
And we get all the comments out of the way.
Yeah, well, comments, I think are done.
Anybody wants to chastise me, bring it on, before I make the motion?
Well, I want to say it in writing before we vote.
Do you want me to read what I wrote, based on what they just said?
Yes.
Yes.
Do that.
That help?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I have that, sorry. May I make sure I'm reading the right part? Motion to approve resolution twenty-two thirty-one, adopting a budget for the city of Riverdale for fiscal year twenty-twenty-three, July one, twenty-twenty-two through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three, with the removal of one hundred thousand dollars in the capital fund for furniture, and the raise for the city council of four percent, retroactive to July first.
And the raise removed?
For city council.
Retroactive to.
Removed, retroactive to July first.
Yeah, she didn't say removed, but removed. Okay, that is-
Well, with the removal of both of those things.
Okay, oh, with both those removed, I got you. Okay, removal of both. Okay, so we have a motion, and the second, the second agrees to that. Do we have a clean motion, city attorney?
So you, you agree exactly as he said it, pulling those things out. I, I need some clarification for this, cause the second, cause that kind of makes the difference. If, if she's in agreement exactly what he said, then we're okay.
I don't want to complicate things for finance and HR, but if it makes it clean, I second everything you just said. If you can fix that from our last paycheck.
Stacy's amazing, but she's gonna hate it. So, so she can do it.
When you're taking people's paycheck, that is, gets complicated. As a former-
So what would probably happen, just to be ultra clear, is she'd have to go in and probably calculate what you got overpaid, and then your next paycheck would be less, and then going forward to-
It's just easier to do it from now on, so she just-
It would be easier for her, yes.
Do you want to amend it?
Are you okay with that? So it's not retro, but just from this time forward?
I don't think, cause you guys get paid the second payroll of the month, I believe. So can you do it as of August first, forward?
As of August first.
Can we vote on this one and then just make a new motion?
Wow.
No.
No, can we, uh, I'm gonna wanna see this in writing, and I'm gonna wanna see Stacy make sure-
Could she write it? Can you write it so that he can see it?
I can amend it in writing, which I-
Cody, do you have your email on that?
My email?
Open? Can I just email it to you and you can put it up on the screen?
So the amendment is to change it not retroactive, but as of August first instead, on the raise.
Effective August first.
Twenty-twenty-two. Hold on, you gotta hear me one second.
We're gonna get it.
Or I can take that HDMI and plug it in over here.
Whatever you want.
I was gonna use that to buy more taffy, but I guess not. I was like, somebody-
You guys are embarrassing. Like, you're making us stay late like they used to when Shirley Jenkins and Stacy Hawes used to go on the council.
And that's a badge of honor, right, Stacy?
Oh!
Earn the paycheck.
I'm just kidding, I said that for, uh, Stacy's benefit. We've done a pretty thorough job tonight, so.
I thought you were being mean and he was here.
I like, I like Mr. Hawes.
He wouldn't have been mean if he wasn't here.
That is fun.
I consider Mr. Hawes a friend. I wouldn't be doing a good job if he thought I was his friend.
I think of him like family. Just a family.
Yeah.
Do you have the resolution? Can you email it to me?
This could be something that we can work on doing better in the future. I could have emailed the motions earlier. That's point is, yeah. Yeah. And that's what I can say. Resolution's gonna change the whole budget, everything.
We're going for it. Then what if the motion fails, and now they have to change the resolution? That's what's gonna happen.
Poor Steve.
You know, he gets paid big bucks to be there, and, and be here and participate.
This isn't fun, watching it if I'm there. It's even less fun at five-thirty in the morning.
Are you in the Netherlands, Steve?
Yes, sir.
Oh, yeah, well, that you could.
Son will be coming up soon, I'm looking forward to that.
Now she processed it. And nobody ever sent anything telling us how to act out of it. Yeah, I got like twenty bucks more.
She'll be getting up and he'll be going to bed.
Man, where's that Happy Meal? Oh, there it is, right there.
Hey, can you just throw that in the motion and then send it to me? Cause it's not letting me edit it. It won't let me, it's trying to open it in Word.
Throw the wording from that motion into the resolution.
It's just been waiting for-
Nevermind, we may have gotten here right, but that's what, uh-
You can tweak it however you want. Well, it's a hundred in your hand. But it's not in there, it's right here, it's right here.
If they change the resolution and we approve it, we'll put it in the first step.
We need to, we need to amend that, actually.
So we'll keep the twenty dollars.
Yeah, we need to amend that.
The twenty in July, move forward with what we were getting. Earn the twenty for tonight. By having to look at that Donalds.
Hey, uh, we're going to make a further amendment to that.
Uh-oh.
I'm going to request a further amendment. Could you please include the mayor in the raise, the, the, um, no raise for the mayor?
Counsel and mayor.
Counsel and mayor, yes.
How about the judge while we're at it?
The who? The judge? Oh, jeez.
No, that's, he was in that motion.
Yeah, when it was originally done.
I would.
Me what? What did I do?
Did you hear the amendment to the motion?
I agree.
Thank you.
Are we still in the meeting? I agree. That was a good change.
We're on clerical time now, it's-
Is that okay to leave talking at times?
Gotta see how it's gonna turn out. What if there is a twist, if we threw the furniture back in, nobody knows?
Wyoming primary was today.
We are only gonna give fifty thousand for furniture, and you have to fight who gets the desks.
And you have to go shop on Facebook for them.
Yeah. Who can't find them on Facebook Marketplace?
No, you just got that.
They might be stolen.
We went to Evanston last weekend, I saw three Cheney signs. I must have seen three hundred Hagman signs. Two of the Cheney signs were next to each other. So if we left this number up here, even though you changed this one, this doesn't change it.
No, cause that's a general fund.
Smart. Yeah.
Can I show you something? Am I allowed to approach?
Not until after, cause it's open communication.
Riverdale's-
Got any bullets in that gun, over there?
It seems like he's on our side, we'll just make sure he's in. I, I actually asked permission.
But, uh, just Riverdale four precinct, Andrew Badger.
Put the remaining in.
Got a hundred and eight votes, and Blake Moore got a hundred and twenty-one, out of Riverdale four. So if you take away all the Democrat crossovers, Badger one big, in Riverdale. He's Rip Fuller. I have a check.
I knew that. Were you on his campaign? Say it again? Did you work on his campaign?
I did. The neutrality thing was for state party officers only. In fact, I was one of the first ones that said, we need somebody like you. I just wish we could get a write-in campaign for him. We needed a million dollars.
You know, have you ever looked at financial disclosure forms? I looked at them, Moore spent over eight hundred thousand, Andrew spent a hundred thousand.
Andrew gave him a really good strong-
Just do it on your own.
You know, and, 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 you know, his, Moore's wife is a, uh-
Yeah, lawyer. Where, uh, is making sure that his father-in-law keeps all his government contracts, and that's why Blake got elected. In, in the KSL debate, Blake actually said, well, two years ago, I ran for Congress on a win.
Jim, we're, we're still in a meeting, and we're not supposed to discuss anything outside that's not on the agenda, so I need to-
I thought it was in a pause. Sorry.
It feels like it is. Come on, you guys.
You're doing a really thorough job.
Well, I, I'm gonna want to see it in writing before I vote.
How about you just break it down?
I know, I know, that's what they're doing.
A recess or something, huh?
A recess for, I would tell them, because he was there.
I don't think it won't be that long. Even though I do feel like this is the right thing to do, thank you.
Change hard about? There, there's a problem. You'll treat me out for a hundred bucks, because that's what you are. It's just your personality. It's exactly you. That isn't about that part, it's about you. They can listen to all of it, it's public knowledge.
You couldn't? All right, well, I guess I'll cut him a little leeway then. I was, I was getting ready to see if we could contract your services.
It's like six hundred thousand dollar ink. Okay, that's getting close. You feel good about that?
You, you can, you can do that per interlineation. We, we have to have the basis of the thing prepared for the meeting, but you can do that just by language and, and directives. But where Bart wants that in there, so what we've done is, we put those two clauses in there, that we reduce the raises and reduce the one hundred thousand dollars from the capital fund. And then also down below in the special funds, that amount's been reduced by that one hundred thousand, so that should cover you.
Okay, so, is the motion good with that?
Motion's good with that.
Second? That's fine, let's get it right.
Space up behind that.
So we get down to previously passed for the city council for the mayor, and the city council, do you mean by the city council?
Yes.
Okay, instead of the four on the first of the line?
Yes, yes.
By the city council, for the mayor and the city council.
I would add in the dollar sign, but otherwise, yes, I'm good for it. Looks great.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But that's just the update.
Okay.
Looks great.
So now we have, uh, we're good with the motion, and we're, now we're good with the second. And Counsel Stevens, are you okay to see that in writing?
Printed? Is it packaged?
Okay. Um, all right, so, um, there we go. So we have a motion, we have a second. This is a resolution, Ms. Marigoni.
Did I make comments?
Uh, sure.
Did you offer, did you ask for comments?
I did, that's why you were commenting. That's when you asked, that's when you asked if you could see it in writing. That's what we've been doing.
That, that's, 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 that's fine to, to do that. That raise for the city council was dumb. I mean, it doesn't take a GED from an alternative high school to know, you don't raise the pay of the council as they, as they, and, as they raise taxes on everybody in the city. That was just stupid to do that.
All right, I would, I would ask you to keep it civil, okay? Let's keep it civil.
I'm glad to see it was corrected.
Okay, cause your comments are directed at another city council member, so.
Yeah, three of them that voted for that stupid raise.
Right, but that's totally uncalled for to do that in this setting, in my opinion.
So let's, I'm gonna ask you to keep it civil, okay, Mr. Stevens? All right.
We're trying.
All right, so he's done with his comments. So now, Ms. Marigoni, will you please poll the council?
Counsel Stevens?
Yes.
Counsel Arnold?
Yes.
Counsel Hanson?
Yes.
Counsel Hilton?
Yes.
Counsel Merrill?
Yes.
All right, that passes unanimously. Um, with no further biz- business, we would need a motion to adjourn.
Moved.
We have a motion? All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Say yes. We are adjourned.